Come everyone. Welcome everyone to the December 7th, 2022 Portola Valley Planning Commission. Welcome. We will start with roll call.
Commissioner Taylor.
President.
Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Commissioner Tark. I see Commissioner Tark, but I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything. Commissioner Tark?
You got a thumbs up.
Does he get?
Here I am.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Golden.
Here.
Chair Kopso.
Here. Good, so we'll start as we usually do with oral communications. So this is a chance for people, for the public and residents to talk on topics that are not on the agenda. And as you all know, we're talking about the housing element zoning rules that we're coming up with to support the housing element. So if your comments on that, please hold it till we get to that agenda item. But right now I'll open it to oral communications. Great. And as Jeff is doing, we like people to come to the mic and say your name if you don't mind, but you don't have to.
Too late now, I think. Jeff Elf's Town Council. First of all, thank you all for being here. And I'm here just to remind people of something in this process that I is either being forgotten or ignored. And that is just sort of how this, how this decision making happens. You know, two years ago, the council first met to discuss our strategy for this housing element update. We have met periodically ever since publicly to discuss the strategy. We meet both publicly and privately with our staff on a regular basis where we, we talk about the implementation of whatever, of the various decisions that we have made. We rely heavily on staff and the reason for that obviously is I'm not a planner, I'm not an attorney. I've learned a lot in this job, but not enough to be an expert, enough to make informed decisions, but, but that's not nearly enough to get the work done. We rely heavily on our professional staff. But every conversation we have comes back to one question. Is the work being done and presented aligned with what the council wants to do? Or is the council's leadership and intention being reflected in what the staff puts forward? And if the answer is no, we talk about it and we correct that. We do that regularly. And, and nobody takes that division of labor more seriously than our staff. We have a tremendously professional and competent staff that we work with. I really appreciate them. And I'm saying all this because in the course of these meetings, I've, I've heard frankly, animosity and questioning of motives of our staff, and it's completely inappropriate. You are more than welcome to question decisions the council makes. You're more than welcome to criticize me for what I'm doing and the decisions I'm making in this job. But staff's job is to implement the decisions that we have made, and I want people to remember that. And I personally want to thank our staff for all the work they do now and have been doing for, for years and will continue to do. And thank you again for, for all the work you're doing tonight.
Thanks, Jeff. Great. Any other question or comments to make during the oral communications? Yes, please. No, no, come up to the mic, please. Otherwise it doesn't get recorded.
Sharon Humphreys. I just wanted clarification on the word staff. What does that include? How many people in what positions? What is staff?
Great. And we'll, we usually take all our comments and then see if we can answer a few. Let's see, on Zoom, I see Sandra Patterson.
Mute. Do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Great. Well, I'm speaking tonight for myself and my husband, Will. We live at 126 Stonegate Road. And I'm speaking tonight because I want to urge Judith Haskell not to recuse herself from the housing element discussions. She was the top vote getter in the race for town council. Why? Because we've witnessed her skills as a planning commissioner. She speaks with clarity. She knows the pivotal questions to ask, and she can build consensus. She's a highly intelligent lawyer. We residents need her to participate in housing discussions. The housing element affects the entire community, not just the Nathor's triangle. And we believe, and I know everyone believes in Judith's integrity. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Sandra. Let's see, I see Marson Pavloski on Zoom.
Hello, this is, good evening commissioners. Just like Sunday before, I wanted to encourage Judith, Commissioner Judith Haskell to participate in this discussion. This town overwhelmingly trusts her voice and trusts her voice to represent what residents really want and really think in a rational, reasonable way. And at the end of the day, it's her decision. And she has to make it. But I strongly believe this limit of 1,000 feet, which is used in some places in law, but at the end of the day is fairly arbitrary, does not really reflect the gravity of the whole housing element for the entire town and should be taken and considered as such. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I will close oral communications. Do we want to answer anything on the staff or just take that for later?
There was this question about who is staff? What does that mean? That refers to the people that work for the town on a full-time basis that are working on this project as well as the contract staff that work to support those activities. So in this particular case, staff would include myself, Kar Silver, the town attorney, Adrian Smith that's sitting here with us, as well as the rest of our staff that works in the office on a daily basis for the town.
Thanks, Laura. Great. So Judith, I think I'll turn it over to you now if you would like.
Thank you. And I know we're not supposed to be responding to comments. This is a statement that I had independently prepared prior to listening tonight. I do want to address my potential conflict of interest regarding the change in zoning for the properties on the Alpine road area in the Nathor's Triangle and related more general matters before the planning commission. In particular, the, the zoning for 4370 and 4394 Alpine are items that are difficult for me because they are 1,000 feet from my home at my primary residence at 6 Applewood. So for context, because it is important that people understand, I initially saw advice from the town early on when there were general discussions on the housing element process. And at that point, we were talking about things at a very high level, and I've proceeded on that basis. However, as the housing element has evolved from a general discussion about planning objectives to a more focused discussion on specific sites, I was alerted that I should revisit whether there were conflicts that precluded me from participating in those more focused discussions. Unfortunately, today, it remains unclear to me whether my circumstance allows me to participate or not. I do appreciate the, the sentiments expressed. I do not know today whether I need to recuse myself from some portion or all of these discussions moving forward. However, it is important that I figure this out and to determine in what discussions I can participate. I have been working with council and the town attorney. And my preferred course of action is to get an advice letter from the FPPC, which is a state body, the Fair Political Practices Commission. So I am working with the town attorney and personal counsel to put together the request for such advice. It will be submitted as soon as possible, and we will hopefully have a reply early in the new year. So I will know what decisions I can participate in when I'm on the council. However, until we receive this letter, I must recuse myself from the discussions connected with the housing element, general plan, zoning, and sequant analysis that are currently before the planning commission. As you can imagine, I am frustrated with this situation as I want to participate in all of these important discussions as much as possible. However, I'm very cognizant that I need to comply with the legal requirements and make sure that my participation does not call into question decisions to be made by the council on these matters. I do therefore need to recuse myself from the discussions until we hear back from the state with an answer on what I can participate in. But do be assured, I am very aware that these are important discussions that I would far prefer to participate in to the extent permitted under law. And so I will recuse myself tonight and I will let people know as the situation evolves. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. And as before, we'll miss you again for this meeting.
Thank you.
So we will now move into our main agenda item, the housing element update and implementing actions. And just a little intro from me, I think you all, everybody here knows, probably almost everybody on the phone, that we are working under a deadline to have a compliant housing element by January 31st. And we are working under, we, the planning commission, as well as the staff, are working under town council direction to meet this deadline. What the planning commission really needs to work on are the zoning modifications that support that housing element. So we're not really talking about the sites or choosing sites now. That's been done. We're trying to make the best zoning possible for Portola Valley, given that those are the sites. You know, we're just having so many meetings. I saw so many of you just a week ago. Laura's going to talk about the schedule, but we're, we're still going to have more meetings. You know, it's a lot of meetings and we're, I know it feels compressed to everybody, but we're blasting away because we have a chance to meet that deadline, January 31st. And I just don't want people to compare to other towns. Some of them are not meeting because they have very little chance. So we're doing this because we can see the finish line and we can see that we could make it. I really want to end this meeting around 11:00 PM. I, for one, turn into a pumpkin, but I don't think we make very good decisions when we get so late and we lose a ton of the public. And it just never feels good to me to get to the meaty parts of the discussion, you know, kind of after everybody's gone. So really going to try to end at 11:00. And just with that in mind, I'll just ask the commissioners and residents if we could really work together to have concise discussions and comments that are really focused on these difficult topics that we're trying to get through in a, in a short amount of time. I will turn it over to Laura for staff report.
Thank you very much, Chair, planning commissioners, members of the public. Let me pull up the presentation.
Laura, your voice is very faint.
Okay, we're going to get really close to the mic. Does that sound better?
Better. You could even get closer.
I don't know if it's possible. Okay, remember this mysterious box. It came back for a second. Remember that from the past meetings? Very strange. It's the ghost of the schoolhouse or something. Someone will have to tell us that story later. Okay, so I'm Laura Russell. I'm a member of the staff. So that brings that all the way around. So this is another big, complex presentation. I'm sorry, we have to do it. We're in it together. I'm going to try to be as clear as I can, and then the planning commission will have a chance to answer question or ask questions. So we're going to have the staff presentation that I'm giving, and we're going to intersperse the clarifying questions from the planning commission like we did at the last meeting. The chair thought that there was a constructive way to do it, so we're going to do that again. And then there's going to be public comments and then commission discussion. Looking ahead a little bit, I wanted to make sure people are aware of a change to the schedule. And we'll be putting out communications to the public tomorrow around this. But what's going to happen for upcoming meeting schedule is there's going to be an update to the new town council on December 14th. That's next week. We had originally planned on holding a planning commission meeting on the 13th. And so we are not going to hold that meeting. Instead, we're going to have that planning commission meeting on January 4th. So this will give an opportunity for everyone to review some of the materials at more length, give the planning commission more time to see everything, and for the public to make sure that they're up to date on everything. So this is a change in the planning commission meeting to make a formal recommendation to the council until January 4th. And then we expect that the town council will review the housing element and its associated implementing actions for adoption over the course of two to three meetings in January of 2023. So the meeting purpose tonight is to update the planning commission and the public on the ongoing housing element implementation work. So this is reflective of planning commission feedback provided at the last four meetings held in October and November. So we're seeking feedback on the latest work and public comments on that work as well. And then there's a few other items that have been requested by the planning commission. So as a reminder, if you're new to this process, this is a study session and no final decisions will be made. This is an opportunity for the planning commission to ask questions and to discuss these topics. So tonight, we're going to talk about general plan conformance amendments, zoning code amendments, including an update from the Woodside Fire Protection District. And then we're briefly going to go over supplemental information related to fire mapping and public comments. Those are just for information and not for discussion. And then we're going to have comments from the planning commissions, so that allows this work to continue. So the first main topic then is general plan conformance. So as a reminder, the planning commission's feedback was to take a light touch approach, just doing the minimal changes that are necessary in order to address things that are inconsistent with the housing element. So in the packet is a summary table and redlined strikeout of those general plan elements. One of the things that's been added based on the last feedback from the planning commission is the gateway designation. So we've added that land use classification into the land use element in the table and in the narrative. And that includes the density range of the dwelling units per acre and a brief description of it. So this should be as the planning commission directed last time. We're just looking for a confirmation or if you'd like to see any final changes. New to the planning commission in the packet this time around is the comprehensive plan diagram, also called the general plan map. And so we just wanted to outline for you briefly what changes have been made for the planning commission's consideration. So we made very minor changes to the graphic formatting since our GIS, our computer systems are better than they used to be around these things. So we just made some of the lines either more dark or more light to make it easier to see. So we grade some out, we made some darker. We updated the symbols for the churches, fire stations, school, et cetera, to make them a little bit larger and outlined in white so we could see them better. Enlarge some of the symbols for neighborhood and community park and preserve. And then we added the new land use classifications that go along with the new zoning districts. So that's really the biggest change. We added those colors and then added a symbol for 280. It was never labeled before. And then just move the symbols around to the lower section of the legend. Then this is something we wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention and get any additional feedback from you. We heard questions and comments from a number of different residents related to the Nathor's map and the changes that were proposed. So we did a little bit more research. And one possible approach here is within the legend to clarify that the ephemeral stream is private open space. So there's been a lot of discussion about what, what is this? Is it a creek? Is it a stream? Is it, how is it related to the rest of the town's drainage system? So we did confer with Howard Young, the Public Works Director. And he confirmed that this facility is a drainage facility. It is located in the town drainage map. It's connected on either side to a 30-inch pipe and an 18-inch pipe. So it's part of the town's system to control drainage. Some of it is above ground and some of it is piped, but a lot of it in town is above ground. Howard confirmed for us that it is not on the FEMA floodplain map, and if it were, it would have to be regulated and considered differently. So the way that we regulate this drainage system now is by town engineering and the town geologist process. And then the applicant is also required to check with the state agencies as part of the application process with the town. So we would like to clarify that this ephemeral stream is private open space. And so there was a question or concern about whether it was public, and we wanted to make that clear through this process. And so we'd like the planning commission to provide any feedback on that. Then there's an item that we still need to make an adjustment to based on the planning commission's previous feedback. I just wanted to mention you wanted us to take the word fourplex out of the voluntary upzoning program, and we still need to do that for the next round of updates. Then there was also a request to look at the colleagues memo that had been prepared by Commissioners Targ and Taylor when the planning commission was talking about the draft housing element before it was sent out to HCD. And so there were specific elements of the general plan that they asked us to analyze and see if there were conflicts. So using that light touch approach, staff and the consultant team found and analyzed that there was no exclusive language. So there were things that could go either way, but there was nothing that was strictly contradictory. So we determined that no changes were required, and we liked the planning commission's feedback and affirm, affirmation on that as well. And then related to the Gateway Creek and the Creek Bed Protection, there's new language that's proposed, and that's on red page 84. So there was also a question from the planning commission about potential consistency issues related to the language at section 6115 of the general plan. And that language is here, and we looked at that as well, and we agree that it was worth looking at. So thank you. But we did find that the existing language is not directly in conflict in the same way that we found with some of the other ones. So saying that something is appropriate for private open space is an aspirational statement. It's not a requirement or a shall kind of language. So in terms of the general plan conformance, these are the, some of the things that we're looking for planning commission discussion on. So final confirmation on the way that we've added the gateway land use language. Any feedback that you may have on the general plan map amendment that we've provided? And if you have any other additional specific language that you would like to be changed or amended, tonight would really be the right time to get that specific language into us so that we can incorporate it for your next meeting. So this is the point where we'd like to pause for a moment and take any clarifying questions specific to general plan amendments.
Great, commissioners. Shall I start? How about you, Nicholas?
Sure. At least I had flagged an issue regarding the emergency evacuation on of Alpine, using Alpine, and suggested that we actually make a finding to have a predicate for the recommendation or the, the measure that was called out. Was that addressed, please?
When we went back to look at that item, we weren't entirely sure of what you were looking for. So if you could provide some additional feedback in the discussion section, that would really help us out.
Sure.
For how to, how to meet your direction.
That sounds great. If that comes up again, please don't hesitate to give me a call and check in with me.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, Nicholas?
Yeah, I don't think that I concur with the absence of conflict with the Dorothy Ford Park language. I think that may also be best handled through a call and actually a line by a line. I'm also, I guess, interested in the consistency issue with Dorothy Field and, or Ford Field and Dorothy Ford Park as the terms were, look like they were being used interchangeably. That was an issue that we had also talked about.
I don't know if any of the members of my team were able to provide any feedback on that question about the terminology that may also be something that's outstanding that we need to continue to address. Okay, so we've got that down for additional discussion and clarification. Thank you.
Is that it, Nicholas?
Yeah.
Okay, great. How about you, Craig?
I think I'm good on the general plan. I think I've got some questions when we get to the zoning.
You, John?
I have no questions.
Okay, great. And Laura, I just have one. You said there was still the outstanding correction to put in, take out the word fourplex because the upzoning could be something more general. I also wanted it to say up to four units. I think, I think it said four units instead of, but it's really up to four.
Thank you. That's a good clarification.
Okay, so for general plan, and everybody appreciates, this is our second review. So if you have any edits or changes, we need to get them into Laura right away so that at our January 4th meeting, we don't have more changes.
Great. Shall I proceed with the next section?
Sounds great.
Okay. Okay, now for zoning code amendments. So again, consistent with the planning commission's previous feedback, we are only drafting what we think are the necessary code amendments to reach housing element adoption in January of 2023. So we have further refined the code amendments for the multifamily and mixed use zones. Thought through a couple more things, have some more to present to the planning commission. And then we have simplified the code language for affiliated housing, looking again, based on past direction on at only the items that need to be completed at this time. So briefly going over affiliated housing, we made amendments to clarify the application process. So a conditional use permit or a CUP would be required, and that would be reviewed by the planning commission. And then the ASCC may review before or after, depending on the type of project and what makes sense for that particular project. So the planning commission would have flexibility around a number of things. The density of the housing units at each affiliated housing site would be determined by the town council when those affiliated housing sites were added into the program. So if future people wish to be added into the program, then it would take a planning commission recommendation up to town council, and then the zoning map would be amended to add those affiliated housing sites as an overlay. And at that time, when the council takes that action, they would be setting the density of those sites. And then there would be a preference at that time for more lower income units. So that would be ultimately the town council's discretion. So staff requests planning commission direction on the affiliated housing code amendments. And in particular, there was some discussion at a past meeting about what to do if there weren't enough current employees to fill those spaces. And so we just wanted to revisit that quickly with the planning commission and get a little bit additional feedback so we can flesh out that language. And there's a couple of things too that are still to come. So we have to make a couple. We included a, a draft of the zoning map again to provide the planning commission and the public updates on what we were working on. And so we do know that we need to make a correction to that. The gateway designation, I'm sorry, that's not, this slide just has a little mistake in it. The gateway designation was mistakenly identified as the multifamily zone. And so based on the conversations that we've had in the past, the Ford, Ford filled park and open space would not be rezoned. It would just be reclassified in the general plan. And that's based on the previous conversations we've had about maintaining the maximum control and public participation in that project. We also need to make a couple of changes to definition and rules of measurement. And so these are kind of the nuts and bolts of the code to just make sure all the definitions are clear and we're clear on how things get measured. So those are not policy changes. They're just minor clarifications. We're going to keep that to the minimum, and those will be included in the next time the planning commission sees the package. The planning commission asked us to continue to work with the Woodside Fire Protection District and the Fire Marshal. And so we continued to have several conversations. This is also outlined in the staff report. But so that everyone knows this important information. The Woodside Fire Protection District is working on a number of different important initiatives for the, the district that they serve, including the town. They're working on fire hazard mapping and updates to the fire code right now. That work is not completed. It's ongoing. So we asked the Fire Marshal at the planning commission's request, and because we normally do, we asked them to provide feedback on the draft housing element sites with the best available information that they have at this time. And so these are the bullet points, kind of walking through what that information and conclusions were. So the Fire District may propose building setback and building separation requirements. They told us that if they do that, they anticipate it would be in the very high and the high severity zones. Or those are parts that have the most fire hazard. Or those are parts that have the most fire hazard. And so those things would likely be considered as part of the fire code update. So this is where the mapping and the fire code update come together. So the fire districts consultant analyzed the sites that we had given to them and concluded the sites, the new sites in the housing element would be in the moderate. And so based on that analysis, staff and the consultant team is presenting, we're giving you for consideration zoning code amendments that assume those sites would be in the moderate and they would not be in the high or very high. And therefore, if those things are proposed and adopted, then they would not be subject to the increased setbacks in building separation under the new fire code. It's really important for everyone to note that if the final mapping or the fire districts recommendations change, then the town will have to revisit these conclusions. As many of you know, as we've been working through all of this information, we all wish that the maps were done quite a while ago by Cal Fire, but they haven't been completed. And so we're all in this situation working through what we can with the best available information. The planning commission also asked that we talk to the fire marshal about any specific recommendations related to street parking. And the fire marshal did not give us any specific recommendations related to that at this time, but did indicate it may be necessary for the fire district and the town to work together at some point in the future related to no parking signs. So now I'd like to go through some concepts and some zoning things that are related to how sites are laid out and building types and thinking about how we can envision proposed density. And so I wanted to make sure that people realize that these are exercises to understand zoning concepts. And this does not reflect any proposal by the property owner. So this is the forty-three ninety-four Alpine site. It is in between the Roberts Market and the approved project that's called Willow Commons. The proposed zone is residential multifamily twenty RMF twenty and the lot size is one point one seven acres. The concept that we've illustrated for you here is for there to be small buildings on that site. So kind of units clustered together. As the code is currently drafted, up to three stories could be allowed. We wanted to make sure that the planning commission and the public had a way to start to visualize how these sites might be built out so that you can evaluate whether that height is appropriate. And we really would like to get that feedback from the planning commission tonight. So this is modeling kind of the maximum underneath the zoning. This does not, we've talked a lot about density bonus. This does not include a density bonus proposal, the way that this is modeled. This is showing twenty-three units with quite large units of an average of one thousand two hundred and eighty square feet. It includes parking that would be kind of customary with this kind of project, including guest parking. So again, we're trying to create kind of a maximum build out type scenario so that people can understand and provide feedback. So on the east side, I'm going to use my pointer a little bit. This is showing ten units with tuck under garages accessed by a shared driveway. So there's a shared driveway that already runs up the middle here between the Willow Commons site and this property. And then on this side is showing thirteen units with surface parking both at the front and in the back. And then this is imagining a configuration. There's a driveway here that could potentially be shared for access along the side of the Roberts Market. So we're showing, this is an example of a three-story townhouse type configuration where the parking is tucked underneath. And then this is a shared entrance facing the central pathway. And again, I want to make sure everyone knows this is just a concept, not a proposal from the owner. So we wanted to be transparent about the maximum in this proposal and get the feedback from the planning commission because we imagine that you would want to see a reduction in the number of stories here. And we're looking for that confirmation. So this is the same scenario showing the draft that's in the staff report and then the actual in red in the second column. So I'll start you here up at the top. We've continued to analyze these numbers. And this gives you a sense of how this proposal works out compared to what's in the draft code. So some important things to point out to you, we're looking at building coverage. This number comes out lower. We might need to work this through a little bit with our definitions. We talked about whether there should be a maximum single building floor area. So this was the footprint idea. And so this one is showing that the footprint of the individual buildings is relatively small compared to that maximum. Again, here we're looking at the three stories. Very important. We need to receive planning commission feedback on that. From the front setback, you can see that there's a buffer that's been added based on previous feedback that we received from the conservation committee. They were looking for a landscape buffer at the front of the property in the scenic corridor. And then there's parking and then there's a path. In this case, we're showing the interior side setbacks to be the same as what the code shows. So fifteen feet interior side and thirty feet for the rear setback adjacent to the residential neighborhood. And then this is showing at the bottom, the landscape buffer that we added based on the conservation committee comments. Then up in this side of the diagram, this is a common thing that as planners and urban designers use to kind of represent. This is very boxy. So I caution everyone that we've talked about when we come back and do more detailed design work on this in early twenty twenty-two-three. You would see, for example, that we might take these upper stories and fit them into roof forms. We can do different things to break up the massing. So this is just, you know, again, for full transparency, showing people what a potential build out could be so that we can receive your feedback. So I know that this is a lot on the slide. If the planning commission wishes in discussion, we'd be happy to bring these materials back up for you. Okay, so then turning to forty-three seventy Alpine Road. I'm sorry, did something happen?
Was it working before? Was it working before?
No, there's a lot of participants too.
You didn't get knocked off is what we were trying to figure out. You just couldn't, you could never get in.
We have thirty-three attendees.
So there's on the agenda. So there's a link and then underneath it, it says, or go to zoom.com, click join a meeting and enter the meeting ID. And then there's a meeting ID colon and then the number and then there's a passcode colon and then a number. So I think there are two methods of instruction that are pretty clearly on the agenda for people to be able to access it. So I would just say through the chair and to the planning commission, do you find that to be sufficient? Should I continue?
I think you should go on. Yeah, I think a lot of people must have gone the other way or used the other process and it works. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The agenda also makes it clear that this is a hybrid meeting and people are available. People can access the meeting via Zoom or in person. So according to the chair, I'll go ahead and continue. Okay, for forty-three seventy Alpine Road, we received extensive comments from the Nathorres neighborhood residents, including a petition with considerable number of signatures. That petition is attached to the staff report for the planning commission's consideration. Staff met with neighborhood representatives and tried to collect their their concerns, understand priorities. And we have developed a few conceptual approaches based on those public comments and the additional work that's been done by staff. So this is new information that was not prepared in time for the packet. This is things that have been happening in the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Just a sec. Okay, so the forty-three seventy Alpine Road site for anyone that's new to the conversation is at the corner of Alpine and Nathorres. We refer to it as having two different pieces or two different parts. So I want to clarify that as we start talking about it. So there is the ephemeral stream, the drainage facility that runs through here where these trees are. And then in the back, this is a driveway in a parking area. And then this is old tennis courts, as I understand it. The commercial buildings that you're familiar with are here and then parking out along Alpine Road. So as we've been discussing this, we've been talking about what we call the front portion of the property, which we're referring to this portion, which is currently developed with the commercial on the Alpine roadside of the of the drainage. And then in the back, we've been referring to this as the back or rear portion of the parcel so that we're all on the same page as we go through this. So the proposed zone for this is MU mixed use. The size is two point four or five acres total. So I want to pause here a moment and make sure that we make a clarification. The housing element says that it's one point five acres. And some of you that have been involved in this process from the beginning, remember that we were analyzing these sites at the beginning based on the assumed developable area. And so we were looking at constraints such as the scenic corridor, the creeks. We did this for pretty much all of the sites in the housing element. When we published the housing element, that one point five number remained in there. And as we've gotten deeper and deeper into this analysis, we've realized that that has led to some confusion. So we want to clarify to everyone that the size of the total parcel is the two point four or five acres. And there's, you know, we we don't have an exact measurement because of the way that the creek cuts through it. So we don't know the exact size of the front and the rear portion without doing detailed drawings that would be to scale. And so we wanted to point out that when the housing element committee was discussing this, we think that they may have assumed that the nine units that are in the housing element would be spread over the site. And so we included six units per acre in the housing element, assuming the one point five acres. And so we wanted to talk that through with the planning commission and see if what they, what options you would like us to take and make sure that that's clear in upcoming drafts of the materials. So this is a concept that's been developed by our architectural consultant. Again, I know this is a lot. I'm going to walk you through it a little bit. And again, this is to present like a maximum kind of build out for transparency, for public review and for planning commission feedback. So the concept that we're presenting here is separate residential and non-residential components. So again, I want to make sure it's very clear. This is not a proposal from the property owner. This is an architectural study, a concept study that would typically be done when you're creating zoning districts. Okay, this is different than any proposal that the property owner may have. So the idea here is that there's nine units in the housing element. And in this case, they're shown all in the back of the property. They're shown as attached units with individual ground floor garages. So that's what's showing here. The ephemeral stream is coming through here. There's quite a bit of trees around it. And this is showing the nine units, again, with quite large units, an average of one thousand two hundred fifteen square feet. And two tandem garage spaces or parking spaces per unit. It's also showing at the front new commercial space. Again, this is not a proposal from the property owner, but an architectural study showing what the maximum could be. This floor area for the commercial space is what's in the existing code. This is not an increase or a change. So we've included a picture that's here up on top that shows what a townhouse development looks like in some places. This does not necessarily have the level of building articulation that would be necessary, the level of design quality that would be necessary in Portola Valley, but showing the planning commission, the kind of building form that could happen. And then again, showing pictures of the types of things that are common in these types of developments in other places. Not making any commentary on the quality of the development or whether it fits into this community. But you could see in some places low compact mixed use development facing Alpine. Or this is an example of the kind of public space that could be envisioned. So this is a code analysis, the same kind of thing that we just saw related to this proposal. And so that coming over here to the to the key numbers, we're showing six dwelling units per acre on the rear approximately one and a half acres of the site. So that's nine units. Important here, you can see that this proposal is for two stories. And then for the setbacks, it's showing a twenty-foot setback that's abutting the AP district and twenty-seven feet abutting the residential district that's behind it. And again, looking at these kinds of diagrams up on here, these are very blocky, but it gives you a sense of the type of scale that we're talking about with the two-story development that's shown in this scenario. So when you see this red line, if you're not used to reviewing these kind of plans, this is a section drawing. And so imagine you're slicing through the development right here. And then up here, you're looking at the development from the side. So that's how you read this kind of drawing. Again, happy to bring this back up during planning commission discussion. So for each of the concepts, we've done this type of analysis looking at some of the major issues related to developing the site and the questions that we've received from the public. So sticking here with the concept number one, related to ADUs. If the development was attached multifamily buildings, then two detached ADUs would be allowed. That's a state law requirement and reflected in our code. They could only have a sixteen-foot height and they would be allowed to have a four-foot side and rear setback. But they would be subject to the town's rules for those units that do not comply with our local setbacks. If the if the units in the development were detached, like clustered single family, then we don't know for sure, unfortunately, how the code would interpret that ADU requirement. So this is something we've been researching and the town attorney can tell you how, again, how complicated these laws are. We've been trying to sort it out. So if the planning commission wishes to discuss that, we could do that a little bit more in discussion. Been a lot of questions about density bonus. And so in this project, density bonus could apply. An example that I've got for you here, if there was fifteen percent of the units affordable to low income households, then there could be eleven market rate units, one BMR, which stands for below market rate for a total of twelve units. Looking ahead into the future, if six units per acre across the whole site, if if that's what we're eventually approved, then the site would allow future development of the front of the property with residential. So you could result with fifteen units total on the site. And density bonus could also apply to that. So again, assuming that there was a fifteen percent affordable component to lower income households, you could potentially end up with eighteen market rate and two BMR units for a total of twenty. In regards to the Rena target and our HCD review, this approach would, we believe, staff believes would have a positive impact on those two things. Okay, the next concept, concept number two is to reduce the density to four units per acre. And that would result in ten units max per the zoning code. In this scenario, the height could be reduced to two stories and the setbacks could be increased to potentially limit development on the rear portion of the property where we've shaded in blue the approximate location of that. So this is a similar approach to the first one, but a reduction in intensity, reduction in height and an increase in setbacks. Our analysis of this scenario is on ADUs, same thing as the first one. If the units were attached multifamily buildings, then two detached ADUs would be allowed, same height and setback situation. Same thing if it was detached. We don't know for sure how the court or HCD would interpret that. Related to density bonus, it Related to density bonus, it, it could be possible for density bonus to apply in this scenario. So for example, if there was no division of the land and a 15% affordable implemented, that's affordable to lower income residents, then you could have 12 market rate and one below market rate for a total of 13 units. However, if the land was divided into smaller pieces, those resultant lots would be smaller and then the unit count would be the below the threshold of three, of five units. I'm sorry. So the idea here is that you've got a 2.45 acre parcel. If you divided the land itself, then you applied that lower density of four units per acre. You would end up with a number of units for each lot that would be below five. So density bonus would not apply. Looking ahead, thinking about implications, if the rear of the property was developed with the maximum using density bonus, then the front of the lot could not be developed with more residential and vice versa. And so in this scenario of four units per acre, you would be creating a limit. So if one side was developed to the maximum, then the other side wouldn't be able to be developed. So that's, there's a contrast between the first scenario where there could be additional development based on the site constraints. In terms of the RENA target and the HCD review, we would anticipate a neutral to positive kind of impact and a neutral response from HCD based on the best information that we have available in talking to them. A third scenario that we wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention is one that came primarily from conversations with the neighbors. And that is to designate the rear portion of the property as an opt-in site in the town's opt-in program or voluntary upzoning program, as it has been described and talked about through the process. So this scenario would allow four units maximum on the rear portion. The proposal also would establish setbacks for this particular lot. The example that's been provided by neighbors and, and these would have to be established, but just as a starting point, perhaps 30 feet on the Nathor side and 25 feet on the two other sides. So in this scenario, we would imagine that the front portion of the site would still be mixed use with an allowance to build residential. So here's our analysis of that third scenario. Again, we don't know for sure how the court would interpret ADUs. But staff's intention for the opt-in program is to be limited to four units maximum. There is some uncertainty and we are continuing to work on this issue to see if there's any additional feedback that we can provide and, and additional analysis. Density bonus would not apply to the rear portion of the lot because it would be less than five units. If the front portion of the lot were developed in the future, then it could be possible, depending on what's proposed, for density bonus to apply. Looking ahead, we're working off our most recent planning commission feedback. And right now, it looks like the opt-in program would require a conditional use permit process for approval. If the rear of the property were developed as opt-in, then we think that the front of the property could still be developed in the future with residential or with mixed use. When we're talking about arena target and our HCD review, this really depends on HCD's perspective. We don't know what they might say. They've indicated to us that the opt-in program, they called it innovative in their comments to the town. But we think they might also be concerned about a conditional use permit process because that's perceived as a constraint to development. So those are the three scenarios that we wanted to present to the planning commission for this particular site to try to give you a range of things to think about and also try to reflect our understanding of what the Nathorist community was concerned about. So in terms of feedback that we're looking for, we'd like to hear your thoughts about those different scenarios that we've presented. We'd like any specific feedback that you have on the newly added development standards, in particular related to height and setback. And then we wanted to see if you have any feedback on the affiliated housing program. And just a little, like we mentioned, a little more feedback about the, who could live there in terms of employees or people who live and work in the community. So I'm happy to say that that concludes a complicated section of the staff presentation. So we'd be happy to try to answer any questions on this particular section.
Great. Thank you, Laura. This is complicated. I'm glad we're doing this before 11:00 PM. So commissioners, let me emphasize, these are just clarifying questions, not discussion. We'll wait and have our discussion after we get the input from the public. So let me start with you, Craig. Do you have any clarifying questions?
I do. Thank you. This is such a complicated area. So this is going to be a little all over the place, but maybe Laura, if you can just answer it as we go through. Starting with some of the easy ones, on the affiliated housing, when we talk about that they need to rent them out to, I'll say members of the affiliated partner, is that within all of the affiliated partners? Or just the one who's doing the building?
The current affiliated housing program is limited to the employees of that exact institution. And the intent was to broaden that to include definitely the employees of other affiliated housing partners in the town, but also to make it available to people that live and work in the community, even if they don't work at one of the affiliated housing partners. So we were trying to get feedback on how to structure that language to try to capture that and make sure it was consistent with the committee's intent and with the planning commission's intent.
Okay, because it seemed to me that if, if we just talk about affiliated partners as a group, then it could be, you know, employees of any affiliated partner in any affiliated housing without having to say it's within the housing that they build. I mean, you know, it seems to me it would be up to them whether they wanted to give preferential treatment, but it seemed reasonable to me that we would think about it as all the affiliated partners. On page, red page 90, there was a discussion of very high fire hazard. And I'm wondering why we're using high, I mean, very high and not high and very high. What was the thinking there?
On red page 90?
Yeah, this is 18 dot 15 dot 70 on C, development in the very high fire severity zone.
Yeah, Craig, Cara Silverton, attorney. So that is a recalcitation of current state law. So we have incorporated that into the ordinance. It's, it's, you know, discretionary. You can apply it to other areas as well, but this, at least this codifies the existing state law requirement.
But if we chose to, we could make it high as well as very high?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On red page 93, there was a discussion of the lot size being a minimum of three quarters of an acre versus one acre. And I was curious why it was reduced. What was the, what was the thinking there?
It was reduced because we wanted to provide some opportunity to split the lot that would allow for development in a portion of the property, but not take up the whole property. And so there was interest throughout this in maintaining local businesses that came from the housing element committee. So we knew that there could be a chance that some or all of the commercial buildings would be preserved. And we wanted to find a way to create new lots that would have a little bit more flexibility, but put a reasonable limitation on it. So we went through a mapping exercise with our consultants to kind of estimate the different lot sizes and to try to think through with the way that the drainage goes through there, thinking about what lot size might be appropriate so that it could still be developed and fit. So we were kind of measuring the back portion of it and it depended on whether the creek was included in the front half of the lot or the back half of the lot. So that's the number that we came up with for providing flexibility.
So, so the, the thought here is that you would subdivide what today we think of as a commercial lot into two and that the back half would be available for the the MU designation. Is that the idea?
Um, yeah, I don't know that it was that specific as the way that you just described, but trying to come up with a couple of different configurations that might work for different development types as either all residential or as a mixed-use development.
Okay, thanks. On 96, we talk about guest parking. Is there any place in the town that we define what guest parking means? And I guess the question I'm asking is, I think in Palo Alto, they limit guest parking or at least street parking to, you know, it's like 72 hours or some number. Do we have any equivalent?
In our code, guest parking always means on the site. It never means street parking. So it's probably not well-defined because a lot of things in our code could stand to be updated. But that's the way it's always been interpreted.
Okay, so we're not really talking about potentially the number of guests. We're only talking about the parking space that's being designated as a guest space.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, so then getting into slightly meatier questions. For the ADUs that are sort of potentially, we have detached units and ADUs. What do we think the likely case is there? I mean, could it be every detached unit gets its own ADU? Or how, how is that being thought about?
There's some complexity to it, of course, and it depends on how these different things come together. It also depends on, you know, what the planning commission would favor in terms of attached or detached units. Do you know what I mean? As, as we're trying to, to build this code up. My understanding is that, you know, there really is some uncertainty because we're trying to create things that haven't been tested legally through a court system or, or through HCD. So I don't know, I don't know, Cara, if you want to add anything to that, kind of where you think we're at in our analysis.
So we think that with the opt-in scenario, because you have a choice currently to develop a piece of property with one primary dwelling and an ADU and a JADU, that if we give the applicant a secondary option to develop with four separate units, that's a, you know, a, that's the premise of the opt-in, that in that situation, we could condition the exercise of an opt-in such that ADUs would not be permitted. And the reason for that is that an ADU option would still be permitted under the underlying zoning option. So that's our current analysis. But again, as Laura mentioned, it hasn't been tested in court.
But what, but what about the other, I mean, like multifamily and some of those? I mean, are those allow for potential ADUs?
If the multifamily units are attached under state law, that's when they get the maximum of two detached ADUs on the same property. So it depends on if it was, how it's subdivided and if the units are proposed to be attached or detached.
Right. So, but if, I was just, just trying to get at if they were detached. I got the opt-in because that was just going in, there was sort of two alternate paths. But if you're in R dash MF, then if they were detached, do we have some sense for whether ADUs are going to be allowed per detached unit?
So it, it doesn't work that way. That would be considered a multifamily development. And multifamily developments are permitted to construct two additional standalone ADUs. So if there are four units, then under state law, whether they're attached or detached, if they are in, on one lot and it, it's considered a multifamily development, state law allows two ADUs total.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, all these questions are all targeted sort of the same thing. I'm, I'm trying to kind of get after the unintended consequences of some of this stuff. Because you know, particularly when we start getting into density bonus and concessions, I'm pretty sympathetic with the neighbors that, you know, can look at this stuff and I mean, maybe they could even say, well, you know, if it was like this, I, I maybe could live with it. But then if it were 50% more than that, that, that would be, you know, too much. So things like the three stories, and Laura, I know you want more information. I was trying to understand, can we limit a zone to two stories? But then if they basically do some kind of low income or below market, can they basically request a concession to allow them to have three stories?
Yes, that is possible if the concession was necessary to fit the number of units that would be allowed by the basic zoning plus the density bonus units. Right, but not in the opt-in.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no, it's mostly, and, and so it's the case, I'm trying to think how to ask this question. Let me go on for a minute. So what about overall height? Again, is that something that we can limit, even if we don't limit the, the stories? Because certainly, you know, some new houses, they end up getting built with, you know, a single floor and it's 14 feet instead of, you know, eight plus, you know, whatever ceiling is, you know, eight plus another, say, a foot or two.
Yes, we can limit the height to make sure that there's not things like, you know, really expansive ceiling heights or kind of double height rooms that end up pushing it even taller. And so, you know, with the planning commission's direction, we can look at that with our consultant team and kind of, if you'd like, make that kind of the least possible height to create a reasonable living space and ceiling height within each of the stories that we end up with.
And then again, if you did below market, you could get a concession that would let you exceed that is, again, I'm just trying to understand like how general these concessions are.
Um, theoretically, yes. But I, I, I mean, I think that would be unusual because you wouldn't, you don't need that ceiling height to accommodate the units.
Got it. Okay, yeah, that's, that kind of makes.
That speaks to like the quality and the architectural character. So the market rate and the, the BMR units would have to have the same quality and, you know, size.
Right, okay. And then all these concessions, and it's at the builder's discretion what they ask for? Or are we allowed to sort of have a priority list that says, you know, the first thing you need to do is keep it within a certain size? And, and the first thing you can ask for is maybe you can increase the, the footprint before you start going up? Like, do we have any ability to sort of prioritize the concessions that get asked for to achieve the desired result?
It's up to the applicant to request them. And you know, some older density bonus codes would kind of list the, the favored ones or kind of put them in a, in an order list. But to my knowledge, the way that the law has changed, that has not really, that's not really part of the consideration anymore. So it really does rest with the request of the applicant.
Okay, great. And I guess my final question is, again, going back to this sort of concessions is, the thing that intersects with this is safety. And my understanding is they can't ask for concessions that are considered unsafe. But, but what, what defines unsafe is, is too much traffic unsafe? I mean, where, where are the, where are the limits around the the safety limitation, if you will? Sorry, there's too many limits there, but you, I think you get what I'm trying to. the safety limitation, if you will? Sorry, there's too many limits there, but I think you get what I'm trying to ask.
I do, yeah. So we talked about last time that the town would have to make specific findings related to the health and safety. So I haven't seen safety related to traffic be used for that unless there was some kind of specific like sightline or hazard that was created by that layout, but that would usually be changed as part of a development application. Cara, I don't know if you want to speak to this as well.
Yeah, so the case law has also developed and put on an additional requirement that health and safety findings have to be based on objective written standards. So as an example, if the fire district has a requirement for a thirty-foot separation and the applicant asks for a concession that is, that would allow for a building to be fifteen feet as opposed to thirty feet. In that case, we would probably be able to deny that concession because there is a written objective finding.
And if we had, I'm not sure we will, but if we had something that said evacuation times have to be less than three hours or four hours or whatever the number is. And a project was going to change that number, would, might that be another example?
Yeah, I think that that could be. We'd have to evaluate it.
And then are there any other, I mean, since we're on this topic, are there any other kind of health and safety? I mean, the separation was a good one. I can understand that one. Are there other kind of health that go with this?
It could include environmental health requirements for septic or sewer connection. It could include geologic safety if it's in violation of one of our policies that's backed by evidence. So those are some things I could think of based on our local context.
Okay, great. Right, I think that's it for now. I mean, this is such a big area that, you know, we could go on all night, but I will pass it back to the chair. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. How about you, John?
Sure.
Clarifying questions.
Clarifying.
Not discussion, right?
So am I supposed to come on affiliated housing? Would I think about that or is that?
Only if you don't understand something about it.
Okay, questions only. With respect to forty-three ninety-four, do we know the currently allowed height on that property? Or and I guess I'm thinking of the currently allowed on the property, the neighboring properties and the community properties around it.
We could look it up for you.
I'm trying to figure out, is it, did we pick something higher or are we picking the same? I'll get back more. That's my question.
Okay.
I have a discussion on that, I suppose. So I guess back to this ADU density bonus. I have a question. I'm checking. I want to check my, my understanding is given that we have turn in an acceptable housing plan with a current, certain number of units. We have to pick the most of this discussion about ADUs and density bonus becomes moot if we turn in the minimum number. Because we can't block, basically, the state law is set up such that we can't find a way to end around density bonus and ADUs because that's what people were doing. So if we go in with our minimum plan, there's no way to block it. That's my understanding. So no matter how clever we're going to try to be, we can't be.
I might approach it differently. That's probably the case for the project that is twenty units per acre. That because we, that's, we want to be able to maximize and take advantage of the mullen density. The six unit per acre, if we expected density bonus, then we could probably ratchet the the units down a bit, say four units per acre. And then you're right, we would have to find additional sites to accommodate those. But it could then take advantage, it could then be designed to address density bonus potential.
Okay, that's my questions.
Okay, great. How about you, Nicholas? Clarifying questions?
Are the MU zoned areas conditional for for commercial or related use retail?
Yes, that's the intention. I just wanted to double check to make sure that we reflected in the MU. We're on red page ninety-one and ninety-two. So there is principally permitted uses on red page ninety-one. And on ninety-two are the conditional uses. And those are all of the commercial uses that are currently conditional in the AP zoning district.
Got it. So that was going back to the question of application of SB six in AB twenty-eleven. And as we discussed with a town attorney that wouldn't have application because they're not principal uses. With respect to affiliated housing, one question that I had that, and maybe this is the right time to ask, is do we know if Priory is planning to expand its faculty housing? Or its student housing?
I checked with the head of school today and he confirmed that they do not plan to add additional housing units in the next eight years.
Got it. That's helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that. For similarly for, for additional dorms or things like that, there's no, no plans of adding basically things that would look like SROs.
That's my understanding.
Got it. That is also helpful in terms of thinking about height versus setbacks. Is there a nexus there that we need to consider? Or is there, is there a nexus there?
Well, there's a relationship, right, between height and setbacks as we've talked about a couple of times with the planning commission. And so that's why we wanted to give you more of a site plan and 3D rendering to start to conceptualize that. But if you want increased setbacks to a certain point, then you're going to have to have more height. Is that the question?
Yeah, that's the, that's the question, which also is tied into the evacuation and the extent of
Hey Nicholas, excuse me, may I interrupt you? Sorry about this. We'll come back to your questions in just a moment. And for the public, we normally go through all the commissioner questions, which I have some too. And then take public input, but we really like to make accommodations for everyone. So everyone in our community can speak. So I'd like to call on Mr. Thiessen to come make his public comments right now. Then we'll come back to you, Nicholas. Hold that thought and we'll get back to you.
That microphone should come out of the stand. And you should be able to hold it.
My name is Rich Season. Around nineteen seventy-five, I purchased the property of forty-three seventy. It was, the office building had just been completed by Ray Kelly. And that's when I bought it. And right now it's owned by a partnership, which is with my children who will eventually get it. I read in the Almanac maybe two months ago that the town had designated my property to have nine units. And that was the first time I found out about it. So I was not aware and didn't participate in any of the disputes or arguments or whatever. So when I found out that you wanted nine units, then I went to Carter War and asked him to do some preliminary plans. You know, maybe I should have contacted the architect that drew up your stuff here before, but save a little money. But so I went to him and I thought that individual townhomes would probably be fit into the neighborhood better than anything else, better than attached dwellings or things like that. So I asked Carter to do some schematics and, and he did some, and one of them I've given to you here. We so there's, there's two groups of, of potential buyers of what we were envisioning. And one would be the people who had been in, in, in the Portella Valley for a long period of time. They wanted to downsize, their children had left. Their properties were, say, six and a half million, which is about the average. And, and most of their equity was in their, in their home, which a lot of people face. So we thought we could offer something very nice, three bedrooms, two and a half baths. For between two and a half million and three million. So somebody with six and a half million, they buy for two and a half, they've got four there to, to invest in get retirement income. They could live in the community, walk to Roberts. We thought it would, you know, I think there's probably more than nine people that might be interested in that. Another possibility would be a young couple that grew up here and want to remain in the community and couldn't afford the six and a half million dollars. So but they could afford or with parents' help, get the two and a half million dollar. They have their kids go to the same school they went to, they go to the same, play on the same little league field, same soccer fields, they walk to Roberts. But, you know, there's a, there's a market there. But I don't know what it is tonight. I mean, I, I'm totally confused. I mean, there's three options here. So you have to tell me what you want. And then I'll decide whether, or my family will decide whether it makes sense for us to pursue it. So that's about what I have. I have more to say, but that's all I have to say tonight, I think. One other thing, I, the way that, and I understand, and neighbors complain about things all the time. I mean, that's why we have rhinos, rhinos or whatever, Wimby's. No. Anyway, you know what I'm talking about. It makes it sound like we're trying to build something in the middle of a neighborhood. This isn't the middle of a neighborhood. You come off of Alpine, you pass an office building. It's adjacent to a coal commercial strip, you would transition to some of the townhouses. And then you would enter the neighborhood. It's not in the middle of the neighborhood, it's beginning it. So I view it as a transition. So NIMBY, that's what I was thinking of. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. So we're gonna go pick up where we left off with commissioners clarifying questions. So sorry, Nicholas, you were in the middle of a question. Could you re-go back to it?
Yeah, just to be clear, did we just open a public hearing? Or what, I mean, that was interesting. What was that?
No, we made a special accommodation because we like all our residents to be able to participate. That was a special accommodation.
And he needed to leave or something?
Yes, yes.
He made a request for an accommodation according to our procedures for those people with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting.
Great, thank you very much. It was unclear where we were. Where I was, was a question about the relationship between height and setback. And we're proposing a general plan, finding or measure, I think it's a TBD, maybe policy pertaining to the width of of Alpine. And I'm wondering if there's a issue with respect to whether we are necessarily or if we're increasing the likelihood of increased height by way of increasing the potential breadth of Alpine as an evacuation corridor.
So we are asking if any future plans related to Alpine for evacuation purposes have an impact on these zoning.
So we're proposing to, to increase in the gateway area, at least. We're proposing to increase or to retain an area for for evacuation purposes?
I'm not aware of any conflict with the evacuation study and the recommendations that are in it. Cara, are you aware of any conflict with what we're proposing?
I, I'm not aware that there's a conflict. My question is whether that we're pushing our setbacks further back and whether that's forcing the height of buildings up is my question.
If we were to increase the setback, then that theoretically could increase the height of the buildings. But I don't believe that we are proposing to increase the seventy-five foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
That's all your questions. Great. I have just a few. Do you mind putting the slides up there again? I think my first one is on option one. I'm sorry. Do you mind putting up option one or go back on the slides?
This is the concept one.
Oh, shoot, where is it? Can we go forward? Let me see where my question was. Okay, I'm not sure. Let me just ask it. I sometimes tell the audience that, you know, we're just regular residents and don't have any special land use training or anything, but you'll see in this next question. I'm just a regular resident. There was a phrase I saw on some slide that said non-residential mixed use. And I find I'm confused. I thought mixed use meant there were houses or a commercial on the bottom and housing on the top. That's how I use that word. So then I was realized, oh, something I don't know.
It's more like the commercial component of an overall mixed use site.
I see. I get it now.
But I agree, the language was kind of confusing. Okay, so thank you for clarifying that. Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know which slide it was on, but, or maybe your words were, maybe it was your words.
Yeah, it could have been. Okay, sorry for that.
Um, so I was, when we worked on the housing element, I was picturing bigger units than this, like bigger than twelve hundred square feet. These are big enough, though, that we think they will get built, I mean, attractive enough and it satisfies HCD, the Housing Commission.
Yes, I think that there is, I would expect there to be demand for a range of units in town since there's not very much range in units right now.
Okay.
So I would expect there to be demand for any, almost any kind of size that, that was proposed or developed. In terms of HCD review, they don't they don't require us to analyze it exactly in that way. They want us to look at it at the different income categories. And then they look favorably upon a range of unit sizes and making sure that we're not disallowing affordable family units. Because that has been a problem in some communities in the past.
Yeah, okay, good.
Smaller is better? In that regard?
It depends on how you're looking at it. Smaller could be better. Because they may be more affordable and open up to a range of units that otherwise wouldn't be able to live in town. Or maybe kind of midsize, kind of between an ADU and a single family home might be desirable. So that's this range kind of is trying to hit that spot of more of a midsize unit.
And then on this concept three, I'm confused, this would have the four units in the back and then keep the mixed use. Is that going to be acceptable? Is that going to be acceptable to Rena? That sounds like only four units instead of nine that are housing element counts.
In theory, the front would still be zoned mixed use and so it would still have the potential for future development. There could be hurdles though with HCD because when there's an existing site that's not vacant, they are usually looking for additional justification and indication that that is likely to develop. And so in that case, we may have trouble making that, demonstrating that feasibility analysis, especially since the owner has indicated to staff that the building is leased up. And so we could get negative feedback from HCD on that. So there is a possibility we would be looking at an additional site in that situation.
Okay, good. And then Kara, you talked about how many ADUs can be put on there by state right on multifamily. I, I didn't quite follow if it's a lot with only four units. You can put two ADUs, but if it's a bigger lot and there's 15 multifamily units, you can still only put two ADUs?
Yes, that's the way the multifamily ADU state law is written.
I see. So there is a, I can see we could triangulate on things, smaller lots so that the potential for density bonus does not exist because if you can only put a few units. But then there's some incentive to keep it all in one lot because then you say it only gets two bonus ADU units.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay, playing chess. Okay, that's all my clarifying questions. So Laura, I think you have one more topic to go through. Is that right?
Uh, yes, and this is informational items. Sorry, just let me move a couple of things on my screen here. There's been a little spider running around up here on the dais. I'm not scared of spiders, but it's been distracting. So sorry everyone, if you saw me trying to smash the spider. Okay, so two supplemental kind of informational items. There's a memo with attachments in the staff report related to questions that we received on the fire maps. Um, so I'm just going to go through this very briefly and we'd be happy to try to answer any questions. The 2008 Cal Fire Map is the official map with the state fire marshal. And there's different aspects of state law that require us to look at that Cal Fire Map for different things. And then the town has what's called the Moritz Map and that's from 2008. It was commissioned by the town. So the town went through a whole series of meetings with the town council, thinking about different ways to approach fire safety at that time, related to the building code, the Cal Fire Map and different things. A lot was happening on this topic at that time. And the town decided to commission this map specifically to evaluate the existing vegetation so that the town could look at vegetation management from a more comprehensive perspective and to educate residents on different vegetation types so that people could start to mitigate public and private properties in the area around the roads in town. So then staff went back to our wildfire consultant, Zeke Lender at Deer Creek Resources. And he had provided additional, our original feedback to the housing element committee and came to a meeting and did some analysis for us and he updated his memo. And his key points that we wanted to point out to the planning commission is that there are a couple of things about the Moritz Map that make it not as effective for this particular task that the housing element committee and the planning commission is undertaking. And so he noted that there are some areas with very high hazards in steep canyon areas that were missed. And that the map in some cases lacks subtlety and that there is a wide variety of conditions that are identified as high hazard, but those could be mitigated with vegetation management. So one of the things about vegetation management is if you do it, then those fire conditions get meaningfully better. That's different than some conditions that we have in town related to topography, that there's not a reasonable way to mitigate. And so we also asked him to weigh in kind of on the relationship between the Moritz Map and the Cal Fire Map. Is my mic going in and out? Does it sound okay? Okay, okay. Um, and so he indicated to us that those are not equivalent maps. They don't do the exact same thing. And so the Moritz Map is related to vegetation and then the Cal Fire Map is related to a number of different factors, not just vegetation. And so there's consensus by most everyone that I've talked to that both the 2008 Cal Fire Map and the Moritz Map are now outdated. And as we've talked about many times, the fire district is currently preparing state of the art fire hazard mapping. So they're working on that. It's challenging, as you can imagine, for us, for them to be doing that. So they've provided us some recent updates, but that work is really kind of in the middle. And that's why they did that extra work to give us their feedback on this process in particular. So once that mapping is done, it will be considered for incorporation into the safety element. And as I mentioned, we would go back and look at the sites and the policies that are in our housing element and see if anything needs to be adjusted once we get those final results. So until that time, we're trying to take all of our available fire mapping resources. We've incorporated those into the draft safety element and we've incorporated those concepts that the fire safety professionals have given us into the draft housing element. And then, as I mentioned, the fire marshal gave us feedback on those particular sites that I talked about earlier in the presentation. Then related to public comments, at the November 30th Planning Commission meeting, there was concern about written public comments and how they were being collected and where they were. And so, so that everyone knows when we do an environmental document like the ISMND, there's a comment period and we collect all the comments that came in during that time and we batch them all together. And then those are addressed in the document called a response to comments. And so that work is underway and there's going to be a response to comments document. But what a number of residents pointed out at that meeting was that they had provided comments that were related to the ISMND but were also general comments related to the housing element. So what we did was we went ahead and included all of those pack, um, comments in the planning commission packet. So you would have access to them and the public would. And all of the comments that were included during the time of the ISMND were either posted to the website today or they will be tomorrow. So you'll, you'll be able to find those in multiple places, but they are in the packet right now. So people can see them. And then, as I mentioned, the town received the petition signed by 78 plus and outdoors neighbors that we were talking about earlier. That's also attached to the staff report. It's actually there twice. Cause it came in at two different times. We wanted to make sure everyone had access to it. And then for upcoming information, we wanted to make sure people are aware that we are working on those housing element and CEQA process FAQs. We expect those to be posted to the website by the end of the week. And you've also asked for clarification about the hermit fault. How that was removed from the map and that work is also underway and we'll provide that to you when it's completed. So these are a recap of some of the key discussion questions for planning commission to give feedback on related to the general amendment, general plan amendments, the, the gateway language, the maps and any other specific language that you want to change. And then for the zoning code amendments, if you've got specific feedback on what we've been talking about, the different scenarios for the mixed use property, specific comments and that feedback we were talking about related to affiliated housing. So this concludes a lengthy presentation. Thank you everyone for your patience and your attention. And we'd be happy to take any final clarifying questions on the informational items. Um, and then happy to receive your discussion and the public comments.
Sounds great. Thank you. So let me start with you, John. Any clarifying questions on this last part?
No, not on this last part.
How about you, Craig?
Um, I had one, Laura, when we were talking about gateway earlier, you were saying something about you, it wasn't getting rezoned or something. I, I think I missed your comment. I was wondering if you could repeat that.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. We started working on the updates to the zoning map. Okay. So that's included in the packet the first time you've seen it. And then you'll notice up in the corner in the gateway area and the Ford Field Park and Open Space area. Right now it shows that it's going to be rezoned to multifamily. That's a mistake. So we just need to correct that. So that area is not proposed to get rezoned. It would stay with its existing zoning. What would change for that property is the general plan land use classification and the new classification is gateway. Per all the feedback and, and discussion that's gone, that's gone into the housing element. Does that answer the question?
I think so. And then because it's part of the gateway, then the normal sort of zoning code restrictions that would come through the gateway classification. I, I'm just trying to understand, how does that land become buildable?
We are not proposing any development standards for the gateway land use classification at the Ford Field Park and Open Space site. So that's not part of this discussion. It does not have to be adopted by January of 2023. The town owns the property, so the town can lead its own process to determine the appropriate site planning and development standards.
But is that true for the small portion that's the Ladera Church?
Ladera Church is proposed to be rezoned to the multifamily 20 designation.
And it would still be part of the gateway or not?
Yes, it can be both. So from a general plan perspective, it's part of the gateway. And then in the zoning, there are development standards so that Ladera Church could develop in conjunction with the town as part of one large project or on their own as an individual development project subject to the multifamily 20 zoning.
Okay, thanks. That, that's definitely makes it makes it a little easier to understand. Then the last thing is in, in terms of all the comments that we received, I, I know you guys have a ton of work and, and trying to deal with all this stuff, especially comments coming last minute. Do we have any mechanism for starting to put these comments someplace just in chronological order? Cause I found this packet particularly difficult to get through when I got to the public comments, because it seemed like a lot of them were duplicated and I found myself going back and forth trying to see whether it was the same or whether it was different. And you know, I read through all the public comments, so it, it definitely was harder for me this time to get through it than it usually is. And I appreciate you were trying to acknowledge the public's request to bring in the negative, mitigated negative declaration comments in general, but then we got a lot of duplication. I'm just wondering if there's some process we could use to sort of get the duplications down to a minimum.
There's, it's fairly often that residents submit them more than once. And so it's hard for us to monitor that and we want to make sure that if there's any changes or anything has happened, that that's reflected there. Um, in this case, we didn't take the time administratively to put everything in chronological order for the ISMND comments. Because those are all the same, have the same like meaning and significance because they all came in during the comment period. And so when we have a project that's changing over time, we try to put them in chronological order for you so that you can reflect that. You know, so that you can see how things are evolving. But for the ISMND, it's all just one big bucket.
Okay. Yeah, it was a confusing bucket, but okay. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That's it for me, Ann.
Okay, great. How about you, Nicholas? Any clarifying questions on this last informational?
Yeah, just a couple. Uh, one is, uh, so what's not here? And that is with respect to opt-in, will we see a next version of that in the next little bit?
Yes.
Do we have a date as to when that might be?
January 4th, if you can come to the meeting.
I will be at the meeting.
Awesome. Yeah, January 4th is when we expect to have that for you.
Uh, in terms of comments, has Woodside Fire provided comments on the MND?
And we were finalizing the MND, we sent them the key conclusions so that they could read over the conclusions and see if they had any comments. So those were reviewed by both the fire chief and the fire marshal.
So have they submitted comments?
Formal comments during the comment period?
Would they, have they submitted comments such that they would be considered in the, uh, in a response to comment and incorporated or addressed in the MND?
No, they have not. They provided comments as part of our internal process like our reviewing departments would. So they gave us minor comments related to some of the code language and what we were referencing and we incorporated those comments.
Got it. So it's like on administrative draft, they provided comments?
Correct.
Perfect. All right. And nothing further then?
Great. Thank you. And I have no further questions, clarifying questions. Um, I'm going to suggest a break, but not quite yet. Got to wait a few more minutes. The next topic for us is we like to receive public comments. And I have a question for my fellow commissioners. The practice for the planning commission is that we let any member of the public that would like to speak, each of them speak for three minutes. And we don't have a more elaborate policy than that. A couple of years ago, the town council did come up with a different policy. They let people speak for three minutes. But if other people in the room want to donate their time to one person, the town council lets them do that up to a maximum of 30 minutes in one time at a meeting. So we've had that request this meeting. Since we don't have a policy, uh, you know, I didn't have just a simple answer. But I said, I'd bring it to my fellow commissioners and see if you all are okay if someone combines times and then speaks for 30 minutes max. Go ahead and tell me what you think.
Um, I'll start. Um, I'm generally okay with the idea of doing some consolidation. I think it gives the public a chance to have a little bit more coherent presentation. I think it'd be nice if we could limit it to 20 minutes. Generally, I feel like whatever needs to be said, 20 minutes seems like enough time to say it. So that would be my preference. And I guess the other question I'd ask is, I assume that people are ceding time to whoever's going to speak. Do we have some way to acknowledge the, the people that are ceding their time?
Good question. We could ask that. Yep. Great. How about you, Nicholas?
Uh, 30 minutes seems like a reasonable amount of time if the issue were actually agendized. I'm less sympathetic to having an, an agendized block of 30 minutes.
What if it's about a topic that is on the agenda?
There's, it's a lot, lot to talk about. But at a minimum, uh, I, I would definitely like to know who is ceding time and, and actually have have a, have a little bit of accountability. Think I'd probably join up with Commissioner Taylor.
I'm sorry, join up in what way? Oh, seating, you'd like to know who's seating time?
Seating time, I think that the suggestion was that we have the max of 20 minutes.
20 minutes you're, you're wishing for. Okay. How about you, John?
Both those suggestions sound reasonable.
Okay.
20 minutes, we're going to know who's actually doing it as opposed to just people claiming.
Right. Okay. And they've got to be in the room, uh, which would parallel the town council policy. Okay, good. I will, um, during the break, I will talk to the person and well, they've just heard the 20 minutes and we need to know which resident or which people sitting in the room are donating their time. Okay. Thanks you all. A five minute break. Let's be very strict. We've got a lot to go through still. So it's 8:53. We'll come back at 8:58. So in regards to our policy, we are going to stick with the 20 minutes. And then, but you can count people that are on Zoom. Are on Zoom for your. Three minutes each, they can add together plus people in the room. Is that clear? Okay, good, okay, so who would like to speak? I'll look for people on Zoom or in the room. Go ahead, Ellen.
Um, I'm sorry, through the chair. Um, did we want to talk at all about how we're going to handle questions this evening?
Yes, thank you, I knew there was another thing. Um, in the past, we've um, residents give us comments, which is great, and embedded in some of those is questions. Then we wait till everybody's spoken. And then we try to answer as many questions as possible. And of course, we use all the comments and info in our deliberation. We're going to, because we're um, you know, working on time deadlines. We're going to ask the commissioners. Which of the questions they've heard, they would like the answer to, like now, tonight. So that it will help inform their deliberation. If it's a question that's interesting but not relevant to this discussion, we're going to hold off on answering that. To save some time, so commissioners, um, be sure you keep track of questions that you hear. That you indeed would like the answer to, so you can think through the issues most thoroughly. Great, thanks, okay. Thanks Ellen, sorry.
Okay, is this on? Yeah, there we go, okay, I just want to start off by saying I highly disagree with what Mr. Thazing said that. They are not in the middle of a neighborhood that they're trying to build on. They are directly in the middle of the, of our neighborhood. He's, you know, he's from out of town, he doesn't realize we have a neighborhood there. So um, I just want to, one quick thing to say, so I just want to say. And I'm asking that if any rezoning needs to happen at 4370 Alpine Road. Um, to allow the rear parcel to be, I asked you that, you ask, you allow the rear parcel to be an opt-in. Parcel at four units an acre with the same rules and regulations as any other opt-in properties throughout town. This would allow additional housing to be built in the center of Mathor's Napwood. Residential neighborhood, which would mesh much better with the surrounding one acre residential properties. The front property could also be an opt-in property with the owner having the choice to either opt in four units. For buildings, I mean, housing, or to keep the present office spaces. I do believe this off option would um, be much more acceptable to the surrounding neighborhood. And mitigate much of the angst that longtime neighbors are experiencing. So I'm just asking you, keep it at a minimum, and that way, we won't be fighting this forever. It would get the housing units into Rena. I'm sure if we, we don't, we never needed all nine units for this arena numbers. So if we get four in and with four options, um, I'm sure if at the end of eight years, we could come up with. Four more houses somewhere or one more, if you, you know, if we, uh, if you opted in for the front and the back. So I strongly ask that it's an opt-in program, thanks.
Thanks. Uh, let me take a caller on Zoom, Leslie Kreese.
Hi, I was just ceding my time to um, Rusty.
Okay. When we get to him, we'll uh, note that, I'll keep track. Uh, next, Tracy Tomasi on Zoom.
Hi, uh, thank you, I just, um, let's see, I'm, I actually am at Free Buck Meadow and I'm up in Blue Oaks. And I just want to just stay at first say that I have received nothing in the mail and I'm new to this, um, you know, to this issue. Um, because we just haven't received any information in the mail, um, informing us that this is actually happening. Uh, but I do want to say I'm a general contractor and I'm also a developer, um, commercial and residential. And as I listen this evening and, and, and um, understand, you know, what's being proposed. Uh, you know, the first thing that, that Pop said in my mind is really, you know, as a developer, I, I would ask for everything and anything. On, so as, as I listen to the impact that this is, is and is going, you know, is going to have on the Nathor's neighbors. It's, it seems to me ridiculous to think that it's going to have little impact, it's going to have a great impact on this neighborhood and um. And also as a developer, I'm wondering, because some on the council may not have, um, you know. Experience in building and what, what spanning really looks like. To do the exercise of actually going out, putting some story polls on this property. And standing, you know, where in, in someone's name, in, in a neighborhood backyard and actually looking at what. 16 feet, 24 feet. You know, and potentially 42 feet look like. When, you know, when actually, um, you know, considering these decisions for the future. Because i- it's impossible to, you know, we're looking at pictures, it's impossible to imagine density until you actually see. How it really does dwarf, especially open space, which these beautiful properties have. Um, that's why I, when I listen to this, to me, option three, absolutely the opt-in. Is most sound at this point in terms of, of, you know, I mean, making a decision and it could, it's also a quick decision. Um, on the part of the current council, when there are so many unanswered impact questions that are still looming. Uh, I think that's about all I have to say, I just, I'm, I think the, the density is what, is, is what is. Um, alarming and, and I agree with the first speaker. Um, you know, this absolutely impacts the Nathor's neighborhoods and it is in the middle of a neighborhood, it absolutely is, it's not. It's not, it doesn't represent accurately, um, the, the commercial buildings that are currently on Alpine. Those do not back up to someone's backyard. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Bob? I see you're going to only take it if you need it or you want to tell us? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Well, through the chair, though, we do want to be able to set the timer.
Right.
Put one down, use one just to make sure we get that done.
I want to know when I can uh.
Yeah.
Cut you off, so.
I understand.
Okay.
You want me to get four or five of them, so I've got enough?
No, how about, okay, how about, give us one and then really quit at six?
Let's see where we are at one, if that's okay.
This, this is why we don't do the seating.
No.
But we're being reasonable, I mean, I said we'll do one, see how that goes, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay, wait, so we're going to do six minutes through the chair?
Yeah, with which person?
When do you want?
Whoever else isn't going to talk later.
Okay, great.
Okay, so um, Dylan, if you could do six minutes on the timer, please?
Okay. Um, I'm not here, just George. And.
That. Because we sometimes wonder.
It goes further than that. That, uh, I had, I've had friends of mine that have said, you know, you fought like hell as far as all the stuff on housing and with the, with the town council and you were doing all these things. And then at the end, then you say, you guys did a nice job. And so a friend of mine said that to me. And I sincerely thought they did a good job, I thought it was a very difficult situation, they did a good job in trying to put together a plan. Um, and I have an unbelievable amount of respect for what you're doing. And this is not just to compliment you because I think I'm trying to get a benefit out of it. For what you do, I'm astounded that you'll sit there for as long as you will. Read as much as you will, listen to as much as you will and take the flak that you do. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate having smart people thoughtful involved in this decision process. All we're looking for is a balanced decision and I think you're going to give us as best job as you can, balance out good. So I want to make sure that we start from that. And since I'm somewhat speaking for the Nathor's neighborhood. Uh, I don't think you'll find anybody that has disrespect in this room. Or another time as far as dealing with you and I, if I see that, please let me know because I would like to get that squashed. So my whole goal in doing this is to say, okay, I think you guys are trying to do the right job. Now let me give you some arguments on why you might do something that, in a certain way. First, the Nathor's neighbors. There are two main issues and they're really clear to me and I hope they're clear to you. One is density and one is stories. So we're interested in not too much density. And two stories, those, so with those two things in place, we start to become reasonably happy. I mean, there are lots of other issues, FARs, there's a whole bunch of other things that go along with that. But that's the basis. And so from that, one of the things I was in the, you know, virtually all the ad hoc meetings, right along with Anne. Uh, with all, all the ad hoc meetings and participated. And we got to, how did each of those allocations come to be? Uh, and I remember that it went very fast during that time, there was lots of kind of conversation and all of a sudden, a number was picked. And I think for 4370, nine was picked. But I don't think there was a lot of discussion about how that nine would could go on one little piece of property in the back. On one, less than one acre in the back. And so all of a sudden, to see that kind of density is a shock to us. I mean, you should know. My, my, my house, my, my lot is 100 feet from this location. So it's not as though I'm not going to see it, it's not going to be hidden from me. If there's some setback, that will help. But just understand that I think if. If we had that, those nine units spread over the site, I don't think we'd hear it from us at all. And so that's what we're trying to get to is the density in that location. The next, um, Rena Housing. We, the housing site inventory. Uh, we have, there are some additional sites available, I think the Priory has some sites that we can bring in. I think the Town Center has a site we can bring in, if we had to, we could go to the road remnant. It's not as though we don't have any choices. So if you could help lower the density for us, that would be great. The opt-in program to us is a great idea. Now, I, I know that there are going to be arguments in this very room about that. Uh, but from our standpoint, the nice thing about opt-in is it kind of says, here's a contained situation. We have heard that HCD likes the idea. That having a pilot here on site would be a great idea, that they can see how it actually works in, in true life. And that's something that to us would make a lot of sense. We're not against developing, we're not saying don't develop. We're for saying, get, do it in a way that stays with some of the rural character. And for us not to have a neighborhood, there are 27 people who wrote you very early in this process. Uh, so if there are 27 who wrote you and they were neighbors with those addresses, obviously it's a neighborhood. So Helen or Ellen Bernaza happens to live directly across the street, I mean, directly across the street from this. The next is. I guess the, the biggest thing that I'm, that I'm really concerned about or trying to make use of is. Uh, there are going to be a bunch of details, assuming that you do the opt-in, assuming that we can end up with that. There could be a bunch of details that are not, aren't decided. And I'll, there's FARs as an example, but there's a bunch of them. And all I'd ask is that you work with us in order to help work through that process. Uh, Karen and I have been having conversations, I feel like we should have a direct line. Uh, but we've been having conversations and what this is, is trying to do the give and take. And I, and she will tell you clearly. That I have had to give a number of things just to get to where we are. And then she's given back and we're going back and forth, so. I appreciate this exchange process and all I'm trying to do is say, if you can give us two stories. And low density. And do that in a way that works for the whole process, we'd be happy, Capes. And I got a minute left. And all I'm going to do, clean nice things together. I was startled. So I'm going to once again say thank you for what you do, I really am appreciative of what you do and a tough job, thank you.
Great, thank you. And uh, you know, I forgot, the paper one, man, you want to come take a turn?
Don't know how sensitive this, you can hear me?
But we can hear you.
Okay, great, um, so good evening, Commissioner's staff. Um. It's great to see you in person, really is, and, and all the other people in the audience, this is a treat for me. Um. So I'm Nan Shawstock, 25 Lurkey to Lane, and a member of the Geological Safety Committee, but. What I'm going to say tonight is, is my own opinion, so I will give a geological perspective, okay? Um. I'm concerned with the um. The quick rezoning process for the, um, for the new sites. I'm not concerned with um, how or whether we develop, but I really am concerned with the long-term safety. Of all the future residents there, I think we have some sites with potential problems. Um, the main reason we have the sites we do, for the most part, is that. And that they weren't already developed and that's because uh, most of them have some geologic problems or potential problems. Um, a few of them are fine, the lots you've been discussing between Roberts and Athor's seem fine, and most of the others. Have potential issues, let's say. Um, I spoke twice in February at the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee meetings. Um, about the loss of detail on the geologic and ground movement potential. Um, maps that were presented to the committee before the sites were chosen. Um, the fault hazard map was simplified, for instance, to include only the San Andreas Fault. Liqufaction hazard was. Um, I'll say all but ignored. Um. But sites were chosen and liquefaction potential areas. Uh, after the sites were chosen, uh. The town should have. Should have planned for assessments of geologic suitability, I think immediately after that. Particularly where high-density buildings are proposed, for instance, in the gateway. Um, are the sites suitable or not? We still don't know. Uh, with the exception of the wedge and the sequoias, I don't know of any other geotechnical investigations. Um, I may be wrong, um, let me know if I am, but I don't know of any. Um, so for example, as I say, the gateway in Glen Oaks have potential for liquefaction. And until you do a study, you don't know whether the entire site. Uh, can liquefy in an earthquake, turn to jelly, the soil turns to jelly and the buildings tilt and sink into the ground, endangering residents. You don't know whether that's the case or whether um. Whether parts of it are fine or maybe all of it are fine. I worry about Christ Church, which is, has a double whammy liquefaction and um, it's in the primary fault zone of the San Andreas. Uh, the question is whether. You, as decision makers and the town council. Um, have enough information to make a well-informed determination. About the safety of the zoning and um. We're about to rezone parcels from, from open space or low density to medium, high density. Uh, with, and there are potential soil or geologic issues, so. I would hope that you would ask for. Further geotechnical investigation site by site. Funded and carried out by um, an independent organization like the town.
Okay.
Okay, and before, before you make the decision.
Okay, thanks, Neil, thank you. Great, I'll call on Karen Askew on Zoom.
Uh. You've unmuted me, Anne, is that okay? Can I go ahead?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Dale, you're going to be my next one to call anyhow, I'm not sure what happened to Karen.
Okay, thank you very much, I've got uh, three quick points I'd like to make. And unfortunately, I couldn't make it in, make it in time for the oral communications, but the first one is. I would ask uh, this august group and the town council to find ways that we could. Uh, try and push beyond the January 31st date, there's an awful lot going on here. Uh, I'm quite concerned, as many people are, about the, the quality of the safety element. Uh, and then of course, the mitigated negative declaration relies on a safety element, which I think is flawed, so that implies that. The negative declaration is, is flawed and probably wouldn't stand up to a court challenge. I would prefer that you take the time that is necessary. To make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row before we go along too far. Again, I'm going to go back to safety, I think is, is primary. Uh, second point is. That we've heard a lot about this builder's remedy issue, I personally believe that is a red herring in the case of Portola Valley. Particularly if we had a, a really valid safety element. Uh, the builder's remedy can be pushed off if it's a, a, a safety. Uh, issue for the residents and I think it would be, so I, I would. Prefer that you get a negative, a second legal opinion or multiple legal opinions on that. So we know exactly the situation we're in. And my third point, very quickly, and I'm, I'm glad to see that Commissioners Targ and Taylor started thinking about the evacuation. Times that uh, is going to take for people to get out of Portola Valley. Uh, this has always been top of mind for me and some of the recent information and. Shows that it takes four or five hours to get out in, in some of the scenarios and by adding additional residences. It increases that only by, you know, 15, 20 minutes, but I'm asking you the question that if we have a fort. But I'm asking you the question that if we have a four to five hours to get out of Portola Valley, we already have a significant risk to life and safety in, in the town and that I believe needs to be mitigated before we can add additional housing. And I am uncomfortable making an assessment that says, oh, it's fine that we're going to have some loss of life. And by adding additional residences in town, we're going to have additional loss of life in town because of those additional residences. So anyway, I would, I would like that to also be considered in the safety element. So thank you very much for your time.
Yep, thanks, Dale. Hey Dylan, can we call on Karen Askey now? It's out of order, but she had her hand up there before and I think something happened.
Sure, I'll bring her to the front of the queue. Give me a moment. Karen, you can go ahead and.
Hello, hi, everybody. I would like to cede my time to Rusty. I sent in some comments this morning and I just wanted to say that I concur with every speaker that's gone so far and really believe we need to prioritize safety over housing. Thank you.
Great, Kristi Corley?
Yes, thank you. I would like to concede my time to Rusty Day. And my husband Chuck Corley would also like to concede his time.
Oh, can you put him on so we hear?
He's right here.
Right here, simply concede to Rusty Day my three minutes.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Rita Comas?
Thank you. I did receive more comments from others saying that they were unable to get in with using the link. And they got some help. And I concede the rest of my time to Rusty Day.
Okay. Great, let's see, so one more, Bob?
Hi, thank you. I'd like to concede my time also to Rusty Day. Thanks.
Okay, we don't need any more concessions because there's a 20-minute limit anyhow. So six people gets us there. Great, anybody else with comments before we go to Rusty? Oh, I don't care. No, he doesn't have to be the last one. I, I, yeah, go ahead. Let's go Rusty now. And then if there's more, people might think of more things, that's fine.
All right, make him a panelist.
Dylan, so you're logged into Zoom, right? Rusty? I'm sorry, Jeremy, how are you doing it?
I'm first just making sure the wifi is working.
Okay. So Rusty needs to join the webinar and then we can make him a panelist.
There is a person listed as Zoom user through the chair. I'm not sure if that is Rusty, but there is an unidentifiable person in the list.
I don't think so.
Hope he doesn't use the one Rita was using.
Right, don't.
Do you need the webinar ID?
Why don't, do the chair, why don't you take some additional comments and I'll?
Okay, great. Ron, you want to go? Okay, sounds good.
Hi, thanks for taking my comments. I forgot my joke, nevermind. I just want to say, you know, I, I, I don't believe that the Ad hoc Housing, Ad hoc Housing Element Committee was representative of the community despite the claims to the contrary. I want to know why wasn't the entire town polled 18 months ago by snail mail on priorities and ideas or simply woken to the idea that the state is putting their path? That the lady who called earlier from Silver Oak, she's a builder. She had no idea this is going on until recently. I believe most of the town, if you walk up to the random, random person walking their dog and say, do you know what Rena means? They're going to say, huh? To me, the, the, I'm sorry, but I believe the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee was a row run and orchestrated dog and pony show. There was not a real investigation of how to satisfy Rena in the most equitable and accessible way possible. But I, what I, my understanding is, is, is members, you know, I called in with, you know, intelligent, informed people called in with really good ideas, which were dismissed. I called in with my ideas, I'm not putting myself in that category with the other people. But it was, it was generally, you know, it seems like it was all generally ignored. And, you know, I know that, that from talking to a couple of the committee members, that repeated calls for subcommittees to do the work of getting important background information to inform the committee, these were all rejected, these ideas. And and as proposed, these changes will put Portola Valley on the road to being just another peninsula suburb or another paradise. But there are and there were other options. And what, what I would encourage you to do is, is devote to create a subcommittee. Forget about January 31st. It, it, I'll, I'll come back to that. But what I encourage you to do is, is, is just, we need to slow this down. Because this is not the optimal solution. And there, what I would like to see is a subcommittee which would consider alternative sites. And I, I know that some of these were, were mutely dismissed by the Housing Element Committee. But how about 884 Portola Road? It was multi-use. Has anybody talked to the owner there? I've heard rumors that he's interested. How about the soccer field at Town Center? I know that that was knocked down. But it's, it's over an acre. It's not by any other neighborhood. It's unreutilized space. How about using the, I'm sorry. How about using the $4.6 million Affordable Housing Fund to purchase property? How about counting, not counting basements in 80 use against the allowed maximum floor space? There's so many things could have been done.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Portola Garage. Has anybody talked to Tom Ramey?
Nope. Can I?
Okay, so.
We're going to, I'm going to call on Betsy Morgan Taylor on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Cuffseal and fellow planning commissioners, Laura. I first want to acknowledge that, as other people have said tonight, you have really been going through a volume of material that is unfathomable. You know, I could have read War and Peace twice for all of the material that you, has been laid on you just in the last month. And the speed of your review has been a forced march. And you've been real troopers. So thank you for trying to satisfy our housing mandate and the HCD while, and I believe that this is our collective goal, while preserving as much local control as is possible. It's for that latter reason that I do not favor mixed-use zoning because it is so liable to force us to forego almost all local control. The layers of complexity of the new and still arriving Assembly and Senate bills that have become law and the way that they intersect with one another is almost impossible to map out completely, though I really appreciate staff's effort to try to chart some of the potential worser case scenarios. I just wanted to call out again, some of them that I see that may not have been represented there. I don't think that AB 2011 was called out specifically, but, but I think it was, it was implied. And that's the streamlining bill, which would, which, which specifically applies to the mixed-use, the mixed-use zoning and would, would make this a ministerial building permit, SEQA exempt. And on that, I wanted to refer back to a question that I believe Commissioner Taylor asked a while ago about our overall project review, our SEQA project, that, that was a project review, urging Laura to reassure us that there would later on be a program-by-program individual review. But that wouldn't be possible for the Nathhorst Alpine 4370 unit because it would be SEQA exempt. So, so that's a concern because we haven't had a chance to look at it with any due care and process. I also am concerned about the waiving the requirement for skilled and trained workforce, which is another bill that's out there and would affect this piece. The density bonus law you did call out. I, and I just want to say that, that all of these together and the means by which they intersect become very significant safety issues. And to wrap up, a, a related point is if this, if this is to, if we continue to look at this parcel, I think it's imperative that we call for a 75-foot setback along both the Alpine Senate corridor and Nathhorst because the parking requirements have also been nearly eliminated. I mean, like one per house. There's going to be overflow parking. It's completely predictable and they will be parking along the Nathhorst. And you barely, you can barely get two cars passing one another there as it is. One of those will be a parked car. So the full length of the parcel will need to have 75-foot setback to accommodate the cars that will be parked on the road.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, great, I understand Rusty's. Sit up. I'm sorry.
Anne, we're getting a lot of echo. I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Set up, just a sec.
Testing? Testing, testing?
I'm sorry, is Rusty in Zoom or so we can make him a panelist? I don't see Rusty in the attendees.
I just promoted him to panelist, so he should be showing up in the.
Yeah, I see him now.
Ready bunch cubes.
So may I share my screen with you? Yes, please. All right, well, thank you very much. And if I may, I'd just like to ask so we can see who, who is going to see their time.
Rusty, need to speak into the mic.
I think we're good with all the people online who said you're seated, so.
Yeah. But yeah, 20 minutes.
So I'd like to talk tonight about upleveling the impact of these changes on our safety. Can you hear?
Yeah, it's good.
Sound good.
Pardon me?
You sound just fine.
Thank you. What I want to focus on is three high-level concerns. What's changing with this package? And why is it changing? What are we doing here? Why are we substituting CAL FIRE's 2008 map when it will weaken or gut many of our existing fire prevention policies and regulations? Why are we proposing amendments to the general plan and to our zoning code that would abandon the individuated assessment of hazard and risk currently mandated by the general plan and substitute for that compliance with minimum, as yet still undefined standards and requirements? And why are we amending the zoning code to reduce parcel sizes, setbacks, building separation distances, and at the same time increasing fuel loading on these parcels irrespective of hazard and risk? I understand doing it, but why are we doing it irrespective of hazard and risk? Why aren't we building in a mechanism to ensure that as we do this, we understand the hazard implications and we protect against the risks? First topic I'm going to talk about are why the fire hazard maps matter. They matter because our general plan designates the Maritz map. It adopts it and designates it as the description of fire hazard in our town. We did that almost 14 years ago in 2010 in the safety element. It serves as the basis for assessment of hazard and risk in our town. It also serves as the basis for the fire prevention policies adopted in the safety element. In 40%, the 40% of Portola Valley that's designated by Maritz as highest hazard, our safety element prohibits construction for human occupancy unless adequate mitigation reduces fire risk to an acceptable level. The burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that they have reduced in areas of very high fire hazard, that they've reduced the risk to an acceptable level. In our safety element, 89%, based on the Maritz map, 89% of Portola Valley is categorized as highest and high hazard. And it requires throughout all of that 89% of Portola Valley, special protective measures to control the spread of fire and provide safety to occupants. It also mandates for each subdivision within that 89% of Portola Valley, a study prior to the subdivision that describes its wildfire risk and the factors that cause it, the actions that will reduce the risk, the costing means of providing fire protection to the subdivision, and an indication of who's going to pay for that. Why are we jettisoning all of this? Why are we ignoring this and not building this into the next iteration of our safety element and into our zoning code? Why was the Maritz map adopted? Well, this is what George Mater said when it was adopted and put into the general plan. He said, Maritz has applied a similar approach to hazard mapping as that used by the state, but it's even better. It's on a much more refined basis with more detailed data. He said it was prepared by Maritz and agreed to by WFPD as highly accurate and much more refined than the information otherwise available. And he warned us that it behooves the town to submit the most accurate information, which at the moment is, of course, Maritz. So why would we jettison that? What's the difference between Maritz and CAL FIRE? Well, Maritz studied 5,800 acres, not 100 million acres. And consequently, he was able to do a much more refined and much more comprehensive and much better job than CAL FIRE at much smaller scale. He didn't just rely on aerial evidence. He did a ground inspection throughout the entire district, the entire town. He used areas of, he resolved hazard to areas of five by five meters. CAL FIRE was using a quarter of a mile. He determined slopes from zero to 50. CAL FIRE's only determination and categorization for a quarter acre was whether it had a slope greater or less than 20. That's all they decided. In that quarter acre, they assigned a single category of vegetation. They didn't characterize whether the vegetation had canopy. They didn't characterize whether the vegetation had canopy or ladder fuels, what the density of the vegetation was, they just guessed. They looked at only five fuel types, he looked at eleven different fuel types. That's why George Mater told you it was far better than CalFire and you were lucky to have it. So what did Maritz find? He found, as I said, eighty-nine percent of the town is subject to very high and high fire hazard. How does that compare with CalFire? The map that we are now using and basing this housing element on. We've just erased all that hazard. Just like CalFire did. We don't want to look at it, we don't want to acknowledge it, we don't want to deal with it. What'd Zeke Lundner say about the Maritz map? What'd he tell the housing element committee live? In response to a question I asked him. I'm looking at Ray Maritz's map and I think it's good. He's likely spent more time on the ground than I have, that's for sure. But it's thirteen years old and I think it's going to, if I was going to draw the red circles on the map, I would have a lot more red on it than he's. In other words, Maritz underestimated the hazard and risk, he didn't overestimate it. What Don Bullard say? He said, I'm familiar with it and I agree with it, I do agree that there are much more higher hazard areas. Than what the two thousand and eight CalFire map depicts. So that's what they've told us about the. Ritz map, what have they told us about the CalFire map? Well, Matt Miller, the board chairman of the Woodside Fire Protection District, my opponent in the election last fall, he won handedly. Said, there's no interest in approving the limited CalFire map from two thousand and eight. As it's too old and also too limited. You may recall the district rejected this map as too limited even back in two thousand and eight. It's not safe and accurate to approve in twenty twenty-two either. And what did Don Bullard write to the town when he reviewed the draft safety element? On September thirteenth, he sent the town a letter and he said, the district does not approve of or support the use of the limited CalFire map. From two thousand and eight, as it's too old and too limited. You may recall the district rejected this map as too limited even back in two thousand and eight, it's not safe and accurate to approve in twenty twenty-two either. That's what he wrote to the town last September. So questions that you need to answer, the planning commission, not staff, you need to answer. Why would we adopt an assessment of our wildfire hazards and risks that the fire district has repeatedly rejected as unsafe and unreliable? How are you doing that? And does the two thousand and eight CalFire map provide a more accurate and reliable assessment of our current wildfire hazards and risks than Maritz? I believe the fire marshal's on the phone, I believe he's on the Zoom call. And you can ask him that question. And you can get an answer tonight, we can hear from him, what does he say? Why does individuated risk assessment matter? The two thousand and ten safety element requires an assessment of risk on an individuated basis. That's built into our general plan now, and we're going to throw that out, we're going to change that. You know that and you know why we're doing it? In the highest hazard areas, forty percent of town, you have to have an individuated assessment before you can even build. For human occupancy. And in the eighty-nine percent of town that's high and highest, every subdivision has to do a pre-study. But what are they looking at? I highlighted it here in the presentation, they're looking at risk, fire risk. They're not working at hazard, they're looking at risk, why do they use that term? Because there's a difference between hazard and risk. In fire parlance, hazard is a fuel complex. It's a house, it's a property, it's a vehicle. It's defined by the magnitude of the fuel, the combustibility of the fuel, its exposure to ignition. Risk is if that lights, if that ignites. What's the probability and severity of adverse effects that could result from that? So here's. The Escobar Canyon, you can see at the top Jasper Ridge and you can see Ladera to the right and Westridge to the left. And there's a fuel complex in the canyon. That's a hazard. Question is, if that hazard ignites. What's at risk? What does it jeopardize and what's the probability of a fire burning out of that cannon into Ladera and up into Westridge? Not too severe on Jasper Ridge, we don't worry too much about, you know, the goats out there. But we worry a lot about the people who live in these homes. And the risks that this hazard poses to them. That's why we do an individuated assessment. And the housing, the safety elements foresight to include that in our safety element. Was adopted and approved and championed thereafter by CalFire's minimum fire safe development standards, they require it. By NAPFA's Wildland Fire Protection Standard eleven forty, it requires it. By CalFire NIST and IBHS's mitigation methodology, it requires it. This is the way to prevent and protect against wildfire hazard risking communities. And yet we're jettisoning it, we pioneered it and now we're throwing it away, why? Look at the kinds of things that you look at in an individuated assessment that you can't grab, grab hold of, you know, checklist set of criteria. Well, a fire return interval, this is from the draft safety element. This is how frequently will fires burn through an area. Look how frequently fires return to the Westridge neighborhood. Look at what's predicted there, every five or six years, we're going to have fires there. You understand what that means and why it's important, that kind of hazard as determined by Maritz. What kind of steps we have to take to lower fuel loads and to build safely? Or look at the constrained evacuation routes, where are there constrained evacuation, oh my gosh, look at Westridge. Look at all the constrained evacuation routes there. Isn't this the kind of information that you as a planning commission? Want our town to bring to bear before we decide to build out the environment and magnify the hazards and risks here? Our safety element called for it and now we're getting rid of it, why? Here are the changes in the safety element, I don't see how much time I have left, I don't.
I do, I'm on it.
Don't you tell me.
Seven minutes.
Okay, so I'm not going to go through the, I'm not going to go through how the draft safety element is. Eviscerating the policies in the current two thousand and ten safety element, but they're laid out here. And if you would give me more time, I'm happy to explain to you how and why you should not do this. But instead, I'm just going to point out that. As between the Maritz map and the CalFire map, if you go with the CalFire map. These houses, these safety policies are not going to apply anywhere in town. Because under the general plan, they apply to high and very high hazard areas, look at those in Maritz. Under the new draft, they apply only to very high hazard areas, look at those in CalFire. Why are we making that change? You need to answer these questions, you, the planning commission, not staff. You need to ask and answer these questions, this is why you're appointed, this is why you're here to represent and protect these people. Because we count on you to ask and get. Candid answers to these questions. Why are we eliminating the application of subdivision policies to high hazard areas? Why are we abandoning individuated professional assessment of hazard and risk? On what criteria are we going to rely in their place and who's vetted those and proven that they'll serve the objective? Let me say that zoning changes matter too. Here's how CalFire categorizes the hazard and risk of all the development sites you're looking at, there's no hazard designation. But look at Maritz's categorization, Christ Church, high hazard area, Sequoia's high and highest hazard. The Alpine in, in Nathhorst, high hazard areas. Glen Oaks, low and highest hazard. Stanford Wedge, high and highest. Zoning amendments matter. Concentrating highly combustible fuels in greater amounts in smaller areas with less separation increases the risk of rapid fire expansion and spread. Reducing parcel sizes necessarily reduces setbacks and building separation distances. These changes that we're proposing to make on the zoning map, and I understand now some of these, I took these from the. Staff report that was in the agenda, but I guess some of these have already changed. For example, in the Nathhorst, it looked to me, we were talking about an RMF four, but now tonight I understand we're talking about an RMF twenty. That's a pretty significant change, that's a huge increase in density on that parcel. How are we going to assess that? We need to get this fixed. Zoning, the question was asked, how do you define safety? Well, look at the zoning ordinance and look at what's in here. What's the maximum amount of building that you're putting in a limited amount of space? Well, in MF four, you're putting twenty-four thousand square feet of building. On an acre. How does that compare with the rest of town? Where we limit buildings to three thousand or at most seven thousand square feet per acre. And for the MF twenty, we don't know how much the maximum floor area would be. And for MU, we don't know how much it would be. Look at the setbacks. Look at the building separation distances. Look at the area of impervious surface, all of these criteria affect hazard and risk. Look at how many buildings are on a lot and how closely their space. And here.
Standards and technology.
Here's how it matters for zoning.
While home party against embers is always recommended. Mayor Geddes explains that home party against fire is not sufficient or effective to prevent home ignition. And fire spread if there is inadequate separation between structures.
Because the hardening will not be sufficient. To handle the exposure and it's not money well.
In fact, CalFire, the National Institute of Standards and the insurance industry's. Safety, all occurring structures are separated by less than twenty-five feet. One structure from being ignited by the other.
Look at the structure density then. You have these scenarios here, spacing is greater than fifty feet. No problems. Here, we do have an hazard. Partially mitigate that hazard. Here, the spacing is such that adding this directional preferential hardening. Will not significantly enhance ignition resistance. And the emphasis here has to be placed on preventing that. All of this identity.
As Mayor Geddes explained, in rural neighborhoods, a single ignition within densely spaced homes can be devastating.
If we look at the partial hardening in the context of community. High density community, one structure ignition, large loss, one ignition, the whole thing. In rural conditions with wind and a big density, what we see here is a just a dead of a very similar park. Very small parcels and almost complete destruction, very similar behavior. The fire spread probably. Let's zoom in a little bit more here. And you can see here on less than an acre, we have eighteen residences with structural separation distances. Of eighteen, and here you can see the destruction of all the triangles.
How long does this go? So.
Forty seconds left.
Why do these homes burn? Radiant heat. In eighty seconds. Will ignite a block of wood. That's ten centimeters by ten centimeters. Radiant heat of twenty kilowatts, which is a five-foot bush burning ten feet away. That twenty kilowatts raises the temperature of that wood to three hundred degrees centigrade in eighty seconds. And the pyrolysis, the cloud that comes out of that ignites at three hundred degrees centigrade.
Thanks, Rusty. So is there anybody else here that would like to speak or on Zoom? That didn't seed their time, of course. Go ahead.
So I'm here with. My husband and my daughter, I don't think I'm going to take nine minutes and I'm not here to torture you at all either, I'm. I'm just, I'm so happy to just be able to read from this and not rush. So my name is Tammy and I do live on Nathhorst and. Looking at the first two scenarios on the forty-three seventy took my breath away. And would be devastating realizing this is pushed right up against our back fence. And my neighbors and the fact that it could be two or three stories. It would completely take away all of our privacy, not to mention changing the moderate fire safety that was showed up here. To high and severe fire danger if you allow all of these units to be built next to each other, in fact. Now that I'm listening to Rusty's presentation, Willow Commons, as I'm understanding, is going to be made of cedar wood and less than thirty. Feet from each other, all the buildings, so that's kind of like split in between, if you can imagine like. The majority of my property is right behind the facing, forty-three seventy, and the other part is. Behind the Willow Commons that is going up, just so you can kind of get an idea of where I am. To comment on Mr. Thasing's comment about impact for his proposed development. I think it's wonderful news that Mr. Thasing is willing to hear what the council has to say. Kind of just kind of said like, what would be the best scenario? To you and the neighbors. Which is clearly the opt-in program to be fair to him and all the neighbors and the future neighbors for this program, they're trying to develop to be equal. Amongst everyone and not put all that development right next to residential. Kind of like you were talking Anne last week about how you're going to figure out the opt-in, like the height and setbacks to be fair to the opt-in. Because it's going to happen clearly possibly all over this neighborhood, so I want to be fair, I don't want all this to go in next to us. And then be all of a sudden opt-in and then all these different rules apply, so I'm, I'm just, when I pray at night, I just pray like. Let this just be fair, I know it's so hard for all of you and you're getting the grunt and you feel like. I think it's more emotions for me, not anger, just sadness and losing sleep to be able to articulate and understand all these months of. Trying to grasp all of this concept like Laura is saying, it's, it's difficult to grasp. If you look at any of the concepts presented for forty through seventy, it is clear that is in the middle of a beautiful neighborhood. Four houses directly across the street and two directly behind, not to mention the other twenty plus neighbors. That are going to be directly affected by this development that live on or off of Nathorst Avenue. I really appreciate everyone here, you all and the council. Taking the time to hear us, to truly hear us and how severe this is. But please understand, we are here just looking at pictures, which I'm so happy to finally see the pictures in those. Ugly large townhomes of some that would be right in our backyard, some of them are just overwhelming. But, and not standing in my yard and in my neighbor's yards, putting up story ball. Holes, just like one of a contractor said this evening, having a walkthrough, so. So everyone understands how, how, how impacted we actually are in this area. And how devastating this density is, and any of you here are welcome to come on over, I have a beautiful backyard chickens and. I would love to have you come over, so you are welcome and you won't be trespassing. The last thing I want to say, and I'm done, the last thing I want to say is that in two days, only two of us in that, in the Nathorst area were able to get ninety-three signatures. Over the holidays on that petition against overbuilding on this one area of Alpine and Nathorst. I, I truly believe. And I think you know this, that the good majority of the public unfortunately does not understand. does not understand nor knows about what is going on with any of the demands and the proposals on the table here today. We do have many more people standing in the wings, ready to step forward to keep the density down in this one area of Alpine and Nathor's. Thank you so much.
Anybody else here in the room? Yes, come on up.
My name is Jean, and I just really want to thank you. You really all have a hard job of what you're doing, but in watching that fire hazard, which was an excellent presentation, and your question was why, why, why? And maybe I'm wrong, but I think the reason why is because the state has put these mandates on us. And from my experience, as long as I've lived and built a lot of homes, that the people that are putting these pressures on us do not know anything about our area. I mean, they sit over in Oakland or Sacramento, they have no idea what's here and what you guys are contending with, and they've given you a format to put so much into a small space. And my ask, my thing is, I'm asking, why are we standing for it? Why aren't we saying, there's a fire hazard, we can't do that. This is what we could accommodate, but we cannot accommodate everything they're asking. They're trying to squeeze the city into a block. And this is impossible. It's an impossible feat for you to do, and it's something that's affecting this whole area, not only Portola Valley, Woodside, Atherton, Ladera, every place in California. Once our zoning was taken away. So that's what I want to know is why are we not telling the state that you're asking for things that are impossible? Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Anybody else here? Okay, I think we have gotten to the end of our public comments. Great. So as I've mentioned at the beginning, so as commissioners, if there are any questions that people ask that you'd like an answer to kind of now, as opposed to, it could be answered later if somebody's just been curious about something, but if it would help you or us discuss and make decisions that we have to make, would be good to bring those Nicholas, do you have any questions that you'd like to hear the answer to right now?
Yeah, frankly, honestly, I'd like to have the list of Rusty Day's questions up and review them together with staff, potentially have the fire marshal assist or other expert assist in addressing it if staff isn't prepared to do it right now.
How about you, Craig?
Um, yeah, I had one, it's slightly indirect, it wasn't asked directly, but I'm a little confused between the difference between a fuel hazard map and a fire hazard map. Seems like the terms are being used interchangeably and they, they feel like they're different things to me. So I don't know if we can get the answer tonight, but I think it would be useful to move forward because I'm trying to understand when we get a new fire map, are we going to get a fuel hazard map or are we getting a fire hazard map? Which, the Maritz map seems to be a fuel hazard map, which is about vegetation. And I think of a fire hazard map as being vegetation, but also the steepness of canyons, the direction of winds and a lot of other stuff. And I thought that's what Woodside Fire was doing with their, the fire mapper consultants is that they're coming up with something that was, you know, more detailed. So I guess I'd like to understand the difference because it seems like we keep bringing up Maritz as a fire hazard map, and it seems to me it's really a fuel hazard map.
How about you, John?
Yes, sorry, yes. I was interested to know if we had any comments on the use of that, the 4370 as opt-in in that, trying to segment out the back half of the lot from the front. I don't know, it doesn't, it wasn't something we talked about in opt-ins, I'm not wondering if that really works or not, if anybody has any understanding of that. I was interested to know if there are also any comments. Betsy Morgan Thaler brought up some on possible new legal things and whether or not those are things we should try to consider or whether they're just kind of in the offing, that type of thing. I guess I'd also like a, it's a sort of a question, it was brought up with the same one with the fire maps, which is, for the purposes of rezoning, does it actually matter, given that any actual real project that comes forward is going to have to go through its normal analysis, whatever secret requirement is there, would have to adhere to the latest fire code? So given that no new project would occur before, presumably our new fire stuff will be out sometime in the first half of the year, that I'm not sure that it makes any difference in my mind. So if anybody could comment on that, that would be great. That's it.
Great, and I didn't have any additional questions. I would, I think echoing what John just said though, to ask Craig and Nicholas, do we really need to resolve the fire map question now, given that we have an hour to go through our zoning? For me, the fire question was, you know, for these sites and for the zoning we have to do, got answered very well by the emails from Don Bullard that said the sites in our housing element are all moderate fire risk, with some caveats, but it made me comfortable that we can go ahead on our sites and we do not need to resolve this, the fire map question has a lot of issues, right? So it will, could take quite a bit of time of our hour left.
And through the chair to add on to that, a number of Mr. Day's comments were related to the safety element and not as much to the housing element, and there will of course be numerous public meetings relating to the safety element.
Yeah, great.
So I encourage the planning commission to try to the degree that you can to kind of separate those out and think about what the agenda item tonight is.
That sounds great to me. So I would like to push those discussions off to the safety element and then we focus on these zoning issues, which are our purview to finish and work on tonight.
So I'm not comfortable in deferring it to the safety element because we need to resolve these issues also in the context of the MND. I would be satisfied to move forward if we agenda's the issue and went through it in the context of the MND and moved and discussed the zoning issue, but I'm not comfortable punting for a TBD date. While we have, while we have a live issue and while the issue is going to be pertinent to a decision that we are going to be making.
Okay, great. How about if we proceed on the zoning tonight and maybe we can leave it for direction from council to how much we spend on that, the maps, because I think they spend time on the maps also, and it's going to push us as a default to not get the housing element work done that we have to do. So I'd like to.
So I can tell you, I won't be able to support the MND until we resolve the issues. So I'm actually not comfortable with that if the seeking advice of council, if council wants to give us direction, then council can do that, but I'm not comfortable as a planning commissioner unless I'm told by council to do something different, to make a decision regarding a secret document that involves issues of safety and hazards until we resolve those issues.
Okay, duly noted, I understand.
So it just, you're not going to get an eye from me unless we go and do this.
Okay.
Of course, we don't need an eye tonight.
We definitely don't need an eye tonight, but you know, just, I'm also not comfortable, I'm making very clear that I'm not comfortable punting.
So before you leave, so my comments on it, John started to allude to it. I'm hoping we're going to actually answer the question. Betsy sort of brought up some issues like maybe things are sequo exempt and other sort of problematic areas. That was one thing I was trying to dig at. If we're going to start talking about zoning, I really want to understand what the sort of unintended, I'll say consequences of the zoning are given these state laws. Because if, if you don't have to have sequo, like that's a whole different thing that we really haven't even addressed. So I'd like to understand the answer to that. And then I'm kind of with Nicholas, it doesn't have to be tonight before zoning, but I think we do need to dig into this map stuff. I don't think the safety element, which might be another six or nine months from now before we get to it, is appropriate.
Hey, through the chair, if I may, I'm very, actually, I am comfortable with respect to the issues that Betsy raised. And it may be because I've been asking those questions maybe too obliquely, and I think that they've been asked and answered, and it may be most helpful if either the planning director or the town attorney could simply run through SB6 and AB 2011 and its implications here, as they have given it some thought, were to my mind helpful.
Okay, great. So what I'm hearing is we'll answer or ask Cara and Laura to answer those, talk about those questions, and then we'll put off to another time before the MMD or with the MMD, the fuel hazard information in the safety element, then we'll move on to the zoning kind of discussion among the commissioners. Go ahead, Laura and Cara.
Okay, so for Commissioner Goulden's questions about 4370 in the opt-in and can we segment out the back part? We've been analyzing this, but only for about 20 hours. It's very fresh. But we think it is possible to segment out through zoning, the rear portion. It's not really a best practice to have one property have two different zoning districts, but it is allowed. And so we wouldn't normally do that, but it is kind of an unusual case. So we think it would be possible such that the rear portion of the lot, this is for example, based on early analysis perhaps, could remain in the AP zoning district because in the AP residential is a permitted use. And then that would qualify them as an opt-in property because residential is permitted there. And then, for example, the front portion of the lot could still be rezoned to mixed use and then allow that to have the same kinds of standards that we've been talking about. We would just kind of need to revisit and freshen them up and make sure that they still make sense for that context. So that would give that property the right to be able to either redevelop commercial or, for example, redevelop a portion of commercial and build residential or some combination like that. So I think that on our first look, we think that that is possible. And then for rezoning and kind of thinking about these kind of larger issues and the, what's our normal analysis and sequo and the latest fire code along those lines? The assumption in all of this is that there will eventually be a fire map, either from the fire district or from Cal Fire, that will then come along with all of the legal requirements. So there are certain things that are already tied to a Cal Fire map in the state law, and all of those things would go into effect, and they're increasingly significant. And Cara has summarized those on different occasions for different audiences. And then if there, the map comes first from the fire district, then presumably we would go through a process of the town council considering that map and policies that go along with it. And my preliminary conversation so far with the fire marshal would be that we would consider some kind of process that would have similarities to our geologic safety map, such that people would have a known application process based on the level that they're on the fire map. And so people would know what their application process would be based on their location on the map. And since vegetation is so important, it would be subject to change based on additional information that becomes available. And then if the fire district proposes additional setback or building separation with their fire code, and that was adopted by the town, then those rules would go into effect. And the fire code always supersedes our local zoning if there was a conflict. And so then if something like that happened, we'd be in the position of having to reevaluate these policies, as I mentioned. Cara, I don't know if you can speak to those two bills or if we should add that to our FAQ that's going to be published late this week. What would your preference be?
Well, I can speak to them real quickly, not in any depth, but Nicholas has asked this question at prior meetings, and we've talked about this issue. The two bills that Betsy referenced allow for the construction of affordable housing on sites that are zoned commercial or are located on commercial corridors. However, those bills or laws only apply to commercial use that is permitted by right. With our current ordinance or our current law, we don't have any office or commercial permitted by right. Similarly, what we are proposing for the mixed use project is not commercial by right, but it is through a discretionary process. And we are allowed to, to invoke this discretionary process only if we adopt our zoning ordinance by January 31st. That is why we have been racing to the finish line is to preserve the ability to use a discretionary process. So based on what we have created so far, the package that we have in front of you, because you do have that discretionary process, the office is not permitted by right, we do think that, that you're insulated from, from those two bills.
Great, okay, thanks. Okay, good. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Needs to be very focused. Laura, you had questions for us, right? Were they divided up by the subject or were they all on one?
There's one slide, do you want me to pull that up to at least refresh?
Very much, thanks.
Okay. So on the general plan amendments, we're looking for a final confirmation on the addition of the gateway land use language. Any feedback that you have on the general plan map amendments and any other specific language that you think needs to be changed or added to amendments? And being very specific would really help us if there's additional comments from the planning commission because we would like to wrap up this segment and feel pretty confident about it for your next meeting. Related to zoning code amendments, specific feedback on the newly added development standards, and then your feedback on the scenarios that we talked about for the mixed use property. And then if you have on the affiliated housing codification and that issue about. And that issue about um, employees living and working in the community, if you've got any feedback for us on that. So that's the summary.
Great, so I see five bullet points. There's one, the fourth one is very um, involved and we will have a lot to say. The other four seem very um, we've either already reviewed it a lot or seem simple. How about if we first go around and you talk about one, two, three, and five super quick? Then we'll come back around and do number four with whatever energy we have. Till eleven or a little past, but not much more past, okay? Um, let's see, John, you want to start?
Sure, um, I, this can be quick, um, I do not have any comments on one, two, or three. And on number five, I would love it if affiliated housing. At their discretion, if they have open spaces that they also allow other people. Um, employees and people who live within town to be able to utilize those.
Great, uh, how about you, Craig? On just the one, two, three, five?
Yeah, so. I guess I'm still a little confused about what the gateway implies, I mean, it's seven point two acres. And as I understand it, we're not gonna. Talk about the zoning until sometime later. Um, but my concern would be if we don't maintain some open space, I mean, if, if the entire seven point two acres magically became housing. That would really not be what I expect from this process, so. It, it's just a sort of feeling of unease on where this is going, and so, you know, maybe Laura can. Comment again, I, I still don't quite understand, like, we're not rezoning it, but in the future we'll rezone it. To whatever's necessary, I think is what I heard, but I guess I'm looking for confirmation. On that one, um, the other ones, I think I'm generally okay. On the affiliated housing, I mentioned this before, yeah, I, I would just like to see affiliated housing be people who are employed in Portola Valley. You know, I think that's, that's really what I, I, I think we're trying to get at is, is not to bring additional traffic in from out of town.
Great, Nicholas?
So on the uh, first item, I'm fine with the. Uh, gateway land use language. Uh, I'm not okay with the feedback where on the general plan uh, map amendment language. And I will have specific language as we discussed, I don't see. That there is consistency, and I think that there's also a lack of consistency in the use of uh. The uh, field and the park, and I think that those words have meaning within the context of. Uh, of the general uh, plan, I'd be happy to work with staff uh, offline uh, in addressing that. With respect to uh. The specific feedback on the proposed affiliate housing. Uh, Commissioner Golden's uh, approach is something with which I'd be comfortable uh, as well, I think that's also in a. Kind of sounder uh, legal uh, basis.
Hey Nicholas, on our discussion of that, so when you say you're concerned about the, the general, the plan map amendments. And you've got specific feedback, does that mean you think there's something wrong in there or that it's just unclear and?
I think that there's internal inconsistency uh, among the uh, uh, among the sections. Uh, and uh.
Can you give any examples, Nicholas, because I felt like that's what we went through.
It, it's what I, it's what I provided before, staff said that they disagreed. And I don't agree with staff. Uh, so I think that either there's a matter of our talking through each other or we actually have a disagreement.
So should the other three of us get up to speed so we can weigh in whether uh, we agree?
The uh, the first uh, couple of footnotes in. The dear colleagues memo that we have, which we called out inconsistencies that would be established. Uh, with the uh. Uh, with the um. Uh, with the, with the, with the plan development on uh. Uh, on the Dorothy Ford Park. And if you agree with staff, that there isn't an inconsistency. Then you can say, Nicholas, you've got it wrong. Uh, if you think, hey, there's a point there, it ought to be harmonized. Uh, then uh, then there might be a, a further conversation, but it's the same issue. Uh, that I raised before and uh. We just heard today that staff just disagrees and that's uh, cool, uh. Uh, I think that we probably need to work through it.
So, so I guess my question though was, are you anticipating? That there's real disagreement on it or it's a matter of, oh, here's what doesn't line up with each other and we just got to line them up?
I think that we need to line them up.
Okay. That we probably don't have a big issue to resolve? Or you don't know yet?
I'll let you know.
Okay.
And can I ask through the chair, um, so is it fair to say, um, Commissioner Targ, that the analysis and attachment to? That you just don't agree with our analysis or conclusions?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I got it.
Yep.
I see, I feel like one of the, one of us other commissioners ought to work with you, Nicholas, and see um, what the issues are and see if we agree.
I'd be delighted to work with uh, uh, Commissioner Taylor.
But not me.
And I'm always happy to work with you. There is at least a, a meeting of the minds and we put together a document and if uh. Commissioner Taylor says, yeah, Nicholas, that's not what I had in mind. Uh, uh, I'm also mindful that Commissioner Taylor will soon be counsel uh, uh, Taylor, so I'm also. Uh, uh, very happy, you know, at, at some level really to, to take direction.
Great, I think that sounds good if you two work together and I'd love it if you'd put it. You know, write something up with just clear bullet points that need to be worked on or changed. That's the easiest way for people to make sure they've gotten that communication right.
Let me just ask that Commissioner Taylor, uh, if he's, if he's up for, for swinging from the trees.
Um, sure, I mean, I, I'm also willing to step back and let Ann join in, I mean, whatever we're gonna do, right? We've kind of got to do in the next two weeks, because I think at that point I won't be a planning commissioner.
I was thinking the next two days, uh.
Well, whatever, I'm just trying to say, just making the point that there's a, if I'm involved, there's a, there's a pretty hard deadline involved.
Right, okay, let's go with a hard deadline, yeah, the next uh, two days would be good.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the next two days dead- deadline is, but. You know, I, I'll leave it up to Nicholas and you, I mean.
Hey Craig, if you're up for a cup of tea. And uh, if you're up for a cup of tea this weekend and uh. Uh, going through the GPM, happy to do that with you.
Yeah, so I think we could get something ready by Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreed.
I think that's good.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I think technically, as long as that work is completed before Craig has sworn in as a council member.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, good, was that everything, Nicholas? Did you talk about affiliated housing?
Uh, yeah, uh, I, uh, I like uh, uh, the setup that uh, Commissioner Golden put forward.
Okay, good, and I'm good with the general plan amendments and I also agree with the affiliated housing. I'd even say I'd want it as broad as possible, like if the church wanted to rent to one of their parishioners who. Didn't work here nor currently lived here, and that works for me, you know, some connection, but I. For me, it's okay if it's pretty light.
We um, just speak a little bit to Commissioner Taylor's questions about the gateway and what's going to be forthcoming.
Yeah.
Is um, there is a program in the housing element related to the gateway, and so that's what talks more about implementation. And you'll recall that we're revising those programs to be more specific. So next time you see that language, um, it will be more specific about the program. About how the town would issue a request for proposals, secure an affordable housing developer, undertake a site planning process. Um, so all of that is in there, but the brief version is that the council's direction was to take the time. To do um, a comprehensive site planning analysis to figure out the best use of the site. To maximize prevent um, preservation of open space. Everyone has agreed to preserve the baseball diamond, so I want to make sure we always say that. And then come up with the best site plan using all of those considerations. And that will be detailed more um, in the program section.
And the, the sunrise stuff is sort of built into. The proposal to HCD, because I mean, when we talked about this originally. Part of the goal was to look for other options to potentially obviate the need to build there at all.
Yeah, the sunrise is built in by the fact that we're going to wait a while to even start. And then take time to do a site planning process and then move forward. So there's time in there um, to see the results of some of the other um, programs and initiatives.
Sounds good, okay, you all will go on to this number four, this big one, um, that's uh, can I call it real zoning that planning commissions do? Um, how do you all want to approach this? We have two lots, we could talk about one of them and then the other one. Or people could just give their general feelings and thoughts about it because they likely apply to both sites, right?
And through the chair, since we know this last topic, I'll stop sharing, so it makes it easier for people to see everything.
Great, great, because we may need.
That are on Zoom.
We probably need the um, little graphics and slides back at some point too.
Oh, yeah, certainly, anytime you want, let me know.
Okay, great, does anybody want to volunteer to go first or shall I call on someone? Okay, Craig, how about you?
Um, I, I don't have anything to say immediately, why don't, why don't you start the discussion, I'm just look, looking up for my notes.
Yeah, okay. Anybody ready?
I, I have some points, I may have to come up with some later.
Yeah, we can go around in a few circles, okay, you, you don't have to say every clever thing you've got in the first go round, you can. Come back later and say some more good stuff.
Okay, so I think on the, the one next to Roberts. Um, well, first of all, let's talk on both of them, you know, I believe. Rightly so, our ad hoc housing committee said we have to hit a certain set of numbers. But we don't have to overhit them, so they've got a target associated with those sites. So I think, so I, I believe we have to hit fat. Um, having said that, I totally agree with folks' comments about. But um, you know, two stories is, is, we'd rather have two stories than anything else. I'm not sure on that parcel next to Roberts, though. What the current height limitation is, so I don't think we can actually reduce it if it's actually higher than the two stories. Um, but, but. Given my druthers, I'd rather go with the two, I think I'd rather go, I'd go with the two stories um, in there. I, I did like some of the night, I thought you had some decent setbacks on the rear in there and things like that that were protective, that were good. When it comes to the corner lot on forty-three seventy. I think. Both two, uh, so I think two and three are both superior, options two and three are both superior to option one. I mean, I think clearly we were shooting for nine on the lot, so it should be the four, no matter what happens, it would be the four. Units per acre uh, versus the six. I am concerned, well, you know, one of the things I've tried to do is, is indicate that um. The planning commission, we were not trying to re-educate all the sites in town and come up with new things. Uh, that our job was to try to implement against what had been. Uh, determined by the ad hoc housing committee ratified by the council and submitted to the state. Uh, so that feels to me more like option two. Um, I can't say I'm totally opposed to, I'm certainly not opposed to option three. I do think it has a lot less likelihood of actually transpiring. Um, and coming to fruition, the way we, the way we seem to think it would come to fruition. It seems to me, density-wise, as I think about it. That we're probably looking something more like. You know, something in the quarter Madera neighborhood, so if you've got, you know, a couple of fifty-five hundred square foot units there with the townhouses. Uh, on one point five acres or one point six acres, that's kind of the quarter Madera area. Uh, probably less than, sorry, more, less dense than Lidero. So it, I don't think it's horrible from a density perspective in that regard. I, I do think one of the things that, you know, people keep struggling with is, you know. And, and public is arguing for is that, oh, they don't want density. Um, and unfortunately, that's what we're required to do, I mean, that's the whole point of. The state laws in this area, so. Trying to end around the density, I think is a doomed process, I think we can minimize it to the minimum we have to do to get by. But um, you know, I don't think the state's going to come around and, and let us do things that, you know. Circa, I mean, they've made a clear point of taking the ADU laws and the. The density bonus laws and removing people's ability to try to end around them, just, you know, to, to not do what they want to say. Um, I suspect that'll be the truth in the whole housing element, I mean, I don't think the state's going to let sequel rules. Right, what they've done in terms of their housing rules. You know, they're responsible for both sets of rules, they're not meant to be combative against each other, they're meant to complement each other, so. Those are my thoughts, immediate thoughts.
Great, that's a good start, gets us started. Good, uh, Nicholas, you want to go?
Sure, uh, I, I'm similarly pretty well aligned uh, with your, uh, excuse me, with Commissioner Golden. Uh, the um. I guess question for staff is, I know that we're in a place where we should be having ongoing conversations. With HCD, can you let me know if we have been having ongoing conversations with HCD?
We had um. A meeting with them where we asked them questions about the letter. And so we had that conversation and then they said that we could reach out to them when we had specific things for them to. So we have the option now of being in more direct communication with them when we have something to look at.
So option three, uh, seems like a pretty uh, comfortable uh, spot. I mean, I agree with uh, I, I think it's a creative approach, I think that it's a flexible without uh, breaking kind of approach. Uh, and. And, and it sounds like this is a pretty clear preference by the people most uh, affected. If we're able to move forward under that rubric, uh. I think we ought to give it a try. I don't disagree that it is. Uh, in a certain sense, uh, uh, more straightforward to. Uh, to take a option two approach uh, from the HCD perspective perhaps, but. Option three seems like we, seems like it's uh, it's probably workable.
Hey Nicholas, can I, can I add to that or?
Please.
Question, um. You know, one of the things we've seen with HCD is that they're looking for uh, backup plans if things don't go well. It, would it be possible for us to submit option three with the fallback? With the, with the backup plan being option two if, if it doesn't happen within. Whatever, three years or something, three, four, halfway through, something like that. The plan as a, we have a plan and we've got a backup for it too.
I think that would be consistent with the types of feedback we've received.
But doesn't this require split zoning of that lot?
Yes.
So it would require rezoning or something crazy?
Uh, it could, yes.
Anything else, Nicholas, on this first pass?
I, I really don't, uh. Craig, I, I, I don't disagree as well with uh, with the implication in your question either. Uh, but uh, I, I, I think that it's um. I think it's a, it's an interesting, creative uh. Potential solution.
Yeah, I'm on board. I mean, the concern I have is we're talking about it being part of the opt-in program, but we haven't actually specified. What additional concessions we're going to allow for the opt-in program? So I don't think we fully understand what it means. At least, as I understand it, we were talking about the same opt-in program where we were going to have up to twelve units. So it seems like A, we're double counting and B, part of why we are going to make that more attractive. Because there was going to be the CUP, but we're going to make it more attractive by saying that we provide some additional concessions. So I don't fully understand how that might play in this location. I certainly like, you know, keeping the lower density pushed back, so that part's good. So I definitely think it's worth looking at. I think it's definitely a creative solution if we can make it work out.
If I cannot modify, and that is, I don't think it's realistic for us to say this would be one of the opt-in locations. I think that this would be a designated opt-in location. As I don't think you can reduce density or limit density and at the same time. Take Take pieces off the table. That would seem a bridge too far to me.
Yeah, I guess what I meant was more, if I understand it, we had said there were going to be twelve opt-in units. Plus what we were going to build at this location. So if this becomes part of the twelve. Then it seems like we double counted. So maybe we need to make it opt-in, but make it opt-in in addition to the twelve.
I agree, man. It's like This is a designated opt-in area. Or it has a clone of the of the approach in this location.
Through the chair, as to that latter point that the two commissioners were talking about. I have had conversations with Bob Adams and I think that he had Stated that the residents understood that issue as well in terms of the double counting and that As part of their overall preference, that they would certainly be amenable to increasing the opt-in numbers from twelve to sixteen. To address that particular point. And so I think that would be a necessary component if you were to To accept the opt-in, that there would be four missing units, so we would have to make them up either through Increasing the the number of opt-in sites or through finding other sites.
Yeah, okay, good. Anything else, Craig, right now?
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to focus on, regardless of how we come down on On sort of both these zoning areas is the notion of two versus three stories. I mean, I really think we need to look hard at how we prevent these from becoming three-story buildings. They seem pretty, I mean, unless they're set all the way up on Alpine, and even then, I'm not sure that makes sense to me. So I just worry with the concessions and stuff. That you could still build a three-story building. And so I don't know whether it's limiting building height. Or some other mechanism, but I really would like us to try to keep the number of stories to two.
Good, thanks.
Through the chair, this is kind of a good segue to the earlier question from Commissioner Golden. In the AP district right now, the height limit is twenty-eight feet. So quite restrictive for a two-story building.
Yeah, barely two-story, we'd be safe.
Yeah, it assumes you're not going to have very tall ceiling height and you're not going to have a lot of architectural elements or really strong reforms that get too tall.
Okay.
And I would be okay with that. That, I mean, I don't think our goal here is to create Architectural masterpiece in this location. It's to build housing. I also know a lot of creative architects that could do a lot with that space regardless.
Good, so for me, yeah, I love the examples, by the way. That's so much easier for me to see or think about. Rather than when I was trying to do it just in the abstract. Can we talk about the stories? I I do think we should have just a height limit, maybe higher than twenty-eight, though. I think what people care about is the height, not so much the stories, right? I mean, we did talk about if you say two stories, you wouldn't want people to build two, you know, twenty-five foot stories, right? Make them really tall, whereas I kind of like the idea if people built small height stories. And left room for parking underneath or half parking, you know how they kind of build a Dig a little, not a full garage. I feel like I would like that, or I'd like to allow that if it didn't get too tall. So I think what I'd like to do is put a height limit. People can use the full amount and make taller ceilings, or they can squish it a little and Wish, you know, half a garage height under it or something. Would just feel better to be. Um, yeah, I don't like the dense, the option one on the corner lot. I do like option two, though, and I feel like that does fit with what the housing element tried to do and the numbers. And I have to tell you, I'm really against option three. If that opt-in includes the CUP. As much as I like meeting with you all, we will have this meeting seven times over For that CUP, and I feel like that is just too onerous. Just nothing will get built. I like the thing John said, well, okay, we could trigger it. And I'd like this actually for the regular opt-in, if we end up doing the CUP, is that if, you know, we do not have two applications after Two years or something, then it switches to non-CUP. But for this site, I'd rather just do option two, or very close to option two.
But you're suggesting option two with higher density?
No, with the What works out to nine units. I'll have to look at the slide again.
Four units.
But nine instead of four?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It would, in option two, it would still be possible to have the nine units on the back. But along with that proposal, you know, we would look at the stories and the setback and try to reduce those potential impacts.
I see. Oh, no, I meant, sorry, I'm in favor of nine units on the site that don't involve, that's not opt-in. So
But still spread across the whole site?
Whole site, yes.
So not, because I'm trying to think about how we can analyze this, you know, so not allowing Nine units on the rear portion only.
Right, because I, wait, isn't that, what if we said it's four units per acre? Doesn't that come out to nine? And it's
There's no restriction about not putting them all in one place.
You can all squish them in one place.
You want to know if there's a restriction.
Right, so you would want it, you're okay with nine across the whole site?
Yes.
But you would look for a restriction to limit the number on the back. Could we talk a little bit about what number of units on the back would feel comfortable and see if we can come up with a way to code for that?
Yeah.
Is that, would that be useful discussion? So we've had commissioners say they feel comfortable with the opt-in. That's four units. Is there a different number that people would, or is that the number? Is it five? Is it six? Is it seven?
Maximum of four. I mean, how would people feel if all nine were in the front? That feels better to me somehow. I sort of don't care if there's nine in the front. I kind of don't want nine in the back. Spread out's good, too.
Isn't that, didn't get the back and then you put additional housing As well as commercial, right? That was my understanding is that that was part of proposal number three.
Yes, that the front could still be its own mixed use. And that could still have, in the redevelopment context, it could still have commercial and it could have residential. At, yeah. We'd have to decide the density, but presumably four units per acre, probably.
Yeah.
To make that math work out.
So I'm thinking out loud here, but if we said there's, it's one point six on the back. And it's two point four overall.
But it depends on how you count the creek.
Well, we can't build, we can't build in the creek.
Right, but it, so think about like if you're dividing the parcel into two. Which side, where do you draw the line on one side of the drainage or the other? Sometimes it's down the middle, and then one side gets more square footage, more acreage, and then you increase the density.
So I was just trying to spread it equally across the lot. I couldn't decide if that ended up being four on the back or five on the back, depending on how you're defining the back. But the idea was spread it out evenly across the whole property, in my mind.
Okay, so it's four or five units. Right, four or five units on the back and four or five units on the front. With at least some commissioners preferring the opt-in is the way to do it. And the chair not preferring the opt-in, assuming the opt-in requires a CUP.
Right.
Still to be determined, right? Right.
Can I just clarify on the, or actually, I want to ask my fellow commissioners. You made it sound like the most you could put is four or five on the front. But I'd actually be fine with like two in the back and seven in the front. Man, I don't really care.
Yeah, and I think that, if I understand the neighbors' comments, that was their consensus as well.
Okay, good.
Is to be more restrictive on the rear portion that has more adjacency to the homes.
Yeah, so I'd like nine units overall with no more than four on the back piece.
I would say If we did that as Option two A. I'd prefer that over the opt-in. Because I think it's more saleable and is likely to actually occur.
So if we could find a reasonable way to code for that, I'm not sure we could, we'd have to work on it. Then Then it sounds like two commissioners would like that.
Well, I'd like to flag as well that we don't actually have a crystallized opt-in. Approach right now. And one of the things that we had talked about was The unattractiveness of having an unlimited number of meetings. For the for the opt-in approach, as we should not have a three-year Process for opt-in. So I'm sympathetic To the chair's concern About potentially dragging Out the process for a very extended and painful period of time. Think it would be hard to imagine the set of incentives that we would need to put forward to To allow that to happen. But I think that there's a Kind of a big distance between allowing a significant amount of flexibility. And so unlimited Unlimited hearings. So I think that if we were to limit the number of hearings, not make it ministerial, not make it of right. But to limit the number of hearings, I think that there's probably Probably a balance to be struck.
How about you, Craig? Could you go for this two A concept as John called it?
I gotta say, I don't really understand what it means. I mean, are we proposing subdividing the back? Or is it just one property that's got multiple buildings on it? I guess I'm losing a little bit what what it is we're building, because I know with the opt-in, we talked about potentially Different kinds of ownership for the property and a bunch of other stuff. So, I mean, what is two A at this point?
In my mind, two A was the four units per acre. Pretty much using the, kind of looked like the setbacks looked pretty good to me, holding the height down, but Not allowing all of the units to be put on the back part of the lot, having to have it spread out across the lot. Which may well mean, may well mean immediately That they build a few units in the back. The four or five, and, you know, keep the current offices. Or they may choose to also develop the current offices as a mixed use.
So are you proposing basically to, what would effectively be a subdivision of the property into two parts?
I don't know how the staff thinks they're going to come up with a way to zone it that way. That was when they said they had to think about how to do this. Yeah, I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, because I'm trying to understand what, like, is it still all some sort of tenants in common or something across The entire property or, you know what I mean? Like, this is where I get a little bit confused on these things. I mean, I'm okay with the general, what we're generally saying is four or five houses in the back. I think that seems like a creative way to get at this. But after that, it seems like devil's in the details, and I guess I don't really understand the details.
So wait, Karen, Laurel, when we say there's going to be multifamily housing, and it could be sort of townhousey things or one big building. We never are saying whether the people rent it and it feel, we'd call them apartments would be a casual word we use. Or they're going to sell them and we'd call them condos or townhouses, depending on what shape they turned into. Once we call it multifamily, the person building them can can do different ownership structures. Those are all allowed, right? We don't have to decide that.
Correct. So it's always up to the applicant to decide whether it's rental or ownership. So we cannot regulate that.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing, we were talking about it with opt-in because we were contrasting it to SB nine. And thinking about the ownership options with SB nine, but any multifamily situation is different.
Right, kind of automatically comes with that.
Automatically comes with the range of ownership options.
Yeah, okay, good. So the only thing, I guess what's weird here is usually when you zone, it applies to the whole property, and we're trying to come up with a way To apply one limitation, no more than four on a piece of it. And that's maybe unusual. I mean, we could split the property, but we don't know if we want to do that.
It's definitely unusual. But I think we would want, and I mean, maybe the opt-in is the best approach that we can come up with. Do you know what I mean? Because coding for what we're talking about, I think, is really challenging. So that may be the best approach. It's not any more weird or hard than anything else we've been doing for the last eighteen months.
Yeah, yeah, there, I'm with you there. We can solve this. And, you know, I said this on another context, but A lot of times this zoning is hard because you worry about all the different things, like, oh, if we do it for that lot, what if somebody over here and then somebody over there? This is like a one-lot Zone, right? Can we not write, I mean, I know this is weird, but write If there's a creek running through it and it's next to a neighborhood, that section can only have four houses. Just something that's very crafted for this lot. I mean.
I hear what you're saying. Yeah, and we're still trying to write a legally sound zoning district.
Okay, good.
But there's latitude when we're trying to address unique circumstances. So there's examples in code and where you have different setbacks based on the adjacent use or the adjacent zone. There's different setbacks for creeks. There's different setbacks for different things. So I think we can just try to be creative and see if we can come up with that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that sounds good. What else do we have to get done tonight? On this zoning?
Hey, can I ask on this? So We would still be able, somebody would still be able to apply for PUD?
Yes, so there's the, these sites are not big enough to meet the kind of automatic qualifications for a PUD. But there's a portion of the PUD code that says that the planning commission can approve, it's something like approved PUDs That don't meet these criteria. If there's a special circumstance, it would still result in a superior design. There's some kind of language like that.
Because it's kind of, it's kind of where we're going, isn't it? And as we're trying to craft something pretty creative for For both a unique set of sort of environmental and social circumstances. The environmental circumstances is probably where I would stop. But there's a social aspect of it as well.
So are you thinking of like a mixed-use PUD that allows residential and commercial, but would have limits like a PUD?
Yep. And that would create a lot of flexibility.
And so if we still keep the site as an inventory site and establish a program that would lay out the process that was not onerous. But that could give the property owner flexibility and could preserve the reduction in the, like, less units in the back.
Yep, 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 yep.
It would, I think, have to, we'd really have to be thoughtful about the process, though.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I totally agree. Because otherwise we end up in Anne's parade of horribles.
Yeah, and HCD will not respond well to, if we just make it sound like it's going to be an onerous process.
Yeah, I agree. And it provides some greater flex than, uh, than the opt-in. Which I think is, which is probably desirable here. It allows you to handle it presently as one site, as one property. You don't end up with a dual zoning. Anyway, I, I think that there, there's, there's a probably three options we put on the table that some constellation or one of them, this two A thing, the, uh, modified, or I guess the opt-in, so long as we have some process guardrails to avoid endless meeting. And a PUD which provides some mixed-use optionality. But uh, also uh, would need some, um, some process guardrails. I don't have a view, but I think that there's probably some value in the PUD approach. I mean, it feels much more natural. It feels like that's what we're trying to do. But I also agree that it takes some modification.
Through the chair, um, I guess my only concern about the PUD is that it appears that the owner wants to take some more immediate action with respect to the, the rear portion. But the front portion, I'm not sure that they have a, a plan. So I'm not sure if it would be ready for a PUD. So perhaps you do opt-in in the rear and then allow for a PUD process when the owner is ready to develop that, the front portion.
I haven't given any thought to a PUD with a part of it, part of the property being grayed in for a TBD. I guess you'd be reserving a portion of your development rights to come back.
But that is kind of what we're trying to do in a way, right? Cause we want to restrict the rear portion the most and there's less concern. Obviously still guardrails, but less concern about the front portion. So I think we, I think there's consensus about what the planning commission is looking for at least. And then I think we need to work on the tool. Right? Because we're talking about four or five units on the back. What's the best tool to do that and preserve future development rights on the front portion? For still a mixed use. Is that fair summary?
I think that's right. For, from my perspective, the only thing that I would that I, that I would suggest in here is there's going to need to be a check-in uh, with the, uh, uh, so what, what, one or more, uh, folks, uh, representing, uh, uh, the neighborhood here. As I think that there's a, at least informal, uh, engagement that I would ask uh, you to conduct before, uh, before writing it up.
You know what? I see that Carter has his hand up. How about if I call on him through the chair's prerogative?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing, I, just sort of join the audience. Carter is, um, the architect that did the conceptual sketch for the owner. So I just want to make sure that people know that.
Oh, good. I knew that, but good thing to say that, yes.
Here's Carter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, the, the reason I've got my hand up is that, you know, I, I'm working as the architect for uh, the owners of, uh, forty-three ninety-four and forty-three seventy. These are compassionate owners that, uh, you know, care for their property and care for their neighborhood. And I think that, uh, you know, a subcommittee, you know, of the planning commission should meet with them. You know, and understand what their goals are. Uh, because I, I do think that if, you know, the, the plan has to be executable, you know, during the planning, the eight-year planning period. Yeah, uh, it needs to be something that they would like to do. Uh, otherwise, you know, it's not likely to happen at all. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. So, um, I feel, I guess I'm very uncomfortable about the timing. Um, on the plan, we have one more meeting. We're going to cover the environmental review. Now more of the fire maps before we do that. We need to finalize or keep hashing out the opt-in. Uh, and now we have this that's, um, a little vague now and we'll have to see what you, Laura and others can come up with. But, uh, that's a lot for one meeting.
It is. I hesitate, but does the planning commission want to designate any other kind of subcommittee to work on any of those topics with us?
Good idea.
And what the topics we're trying to deal with are.
Well, what's going to be on the agenda on January fourth is the MND. We're going to get all the comments that the residents made. The staff will have responses to those, so we'll review those. Now you all put the fire maps, we'll review those, um, discuss the MND. Now we've got the opt-in. We gave what I thought was pretty, um, uh, I don't mean this in a negative way, but kind of vague comments to staff. So I think they have to try to make it gel so that, if that's just tough, it will. I'm kind of dubious that it's going to come back and we're all going to go, yeah.
I'm sorry, but this is for the opt-in or this is for the forty-three seventy?
I was talking about opt-in, but the story's the same on forty-three seventy, although I feel like we were a little more cohesive. Um, so I'm a little more confident that what comes back will be acceptable to, um, three or more of us. So are there any of those that could benefit from a subcommittee doing work offline?
I'm sorry, through the chair, um, we're just thinking about, uh, legal requirements and the transition of planning commissioners onto the council and then the quorum issues of the planning commission. Because on the fourteenth, we go down to three members.
That's right.
Of the planning commission. So we could not have a two-person subcommittee, right? So we can't have a two-person subcommittee after the fourteen.
Right. And it makes no sense to have a one-person subcommittee. Is that right?
Well, you could.
Okay.
And you can, you can designate someone to work with staff.
Yeah.
So Laura, I'd be very comfortable with, uh, I mean, from my perspective and, and, and others, of course, have, may have different opinions. For you to engage, uh, with the, uh, property owner and, uh, and with Bob, for example, and to try to work out a either an opt-in or a modified PUD kind of approach. I'm not sure that two A works, but I think so long as there's a meeting at the minds. Uh, I wouldn't have a problem with that. And I also recognize, uh, Anne's point that, uh, uh, we need to put some brackets around, uh, the number of hearings that we would have.
Yeah, for this site, I would really like to have just plain old zoning rules so people could start right away.
Well, we'll of course have zoning rules, but, uh, uh, I don't think that they, they, they may not be as crystallized as, uh, uh, as, as, as you might like. Uh, but, um, I think what you can, this probably, uh, but I could be wrong. Uh, again, I think that there's an opportunity here to do something flexible with a, a limited amount of process involved.
Uh, through the chair, would it be appropriate for the chair um, to work with us and kind of, uh, help to facilitate conversations um, with the community and with the property owner?
I mean, I'd be happy to do that, yes. If that's what you're asking.
To see if, so there would be some planning commission participation in that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm happy to do that. I guess I still worry we might come back and then there'll be one person in favor, me, and three people against. I'll be, since we haven't gelled, um, right now, right? It's just hard to, uh, get a consensus in one next meeting when things are still in the air.
I think that if you came back and there was you and you've got a property owner and, uh, the community standing with you, I think that there you, you'd, you'd find, uh, you'd find people falling into place.
I see, that's interesting. Yeah, okay.
And I would say, you know, if some better solution doesn't, doesn't arise out of this, I'd go with two with the four units per acre. With all its works, which means that you could put all the stuff on the back.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I would, I would, it's simple, it's done, it's, it's, it's the devil we know. If we have to make a decision, that's where I would go today.
I see. That's good to know. Okay, good. So our plan now is I will work with Laura and the residents and the owner. And we'll see if we can come up with something. It's got to be in like the next week though, right? So it can get out before, well, you'll figure out the holidays and still January fourth enough time. And then, um, but we'll still leave it that staff will kind of figure out the best proposal to put on the table for opt-in. I'm nervous about that too.
What is, I mean, you're just talking forty-three seventy, right?
I had been, but now I just switched in my last two sentences to, for the meeting on January fourth. I'm also worried about opt-in that we're kind of, you know, got a lot of ideas on the table. Not our fault, right? We're trying to make sausage and the timeline's tight is the problem. Um, I'm just worried that it's going to be hard to get to a consensus on opt-in on January fourth, because we weren't that.
Yeah, it's okay. We may not have consensus and that's all right.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, well, we'll do the best that we can and council ultimately gets to, gets to make the decision here. It'd be nice to have consensus, not necessary.
Yeah, through the chair, what the chair and I have, um, talked about is that if there are any items where we don't have consensus, then we would give planning commissioners that opportunity to put their comments into the record and make sure they're transmitted up to council. So they would have the benefit of that discussion.
Okay.
Sounds great.
And I, I did think we were pretty close on opt-in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So.
Agreed.
Yeah, what I, what I would add, since I, I won't be here for any more of these discussions after tonight, uh, other than Nicholas and I, subcommittee. My vision of the opt-in, when we talked about it before, was to provide the developer with some additional benefits. But have a design process that gave us a superior design. To me, that was sort of the critical element. Otherwise you might as well just default this to SB nine or some other, you know, sort of automated process. So I'm uncomfortable with a process that, that is, that doesn't have a sort of subjective design review part of it. Cause that was the whole point of giving them additional concessions.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Shall I close out this part of the, uh, agenda? No, we took all your comments though, and they were part of our brain thinking. So we appreciate that. Um, let's see, so we'll go into minutes?
Please.
Yeah. Can I just ask a question about, these are now verbatim minutes that a, um, automated system created, is that right?
No.
A per, a human being did it.
Okay, so per the planning commission's past direction, the planning commission has switched back to summary minutes in general. However, when we have an environmental review meeting, then we do verbatim minutes so that they can go into the record and everybody has them. So these are verbatim minutes done by our transcription service. Not by, um, AI.
Not AI.
By a person.
Usually they summarize, that service summarizes.
They summarize, yeah. So this time is verbatim, because it's when you talked about the MND and we took public comments. And then normally we're going to go back to summary minutes for these meetings.
Okay, does anybody have any comments on these minutes or corrections, I guess?
They were fine.
Okay. And I have one, my mic didn't work very well at the beginning. Um, and something, it just sounded kind of vulgar, so I would like to change it. Uh, I've lost my, um, um, just a second, I have to jump to my minutes. Um, on P, red page three sixty-four. It only caught part of my sentence. It says, really sucked all the planning commission work. Um, I think what I was trying to say is in reference to my colleagues leaving, we will suck out all the planning commission work. We can, it's still not a great sentence, but it's I'm always torn on these minutes. It's like, can I tell you what I wish I'd said? Cause it would sound a lot better if I did.
Verbatim minutes are the worst for that. Um, but we could always, maybe one of us that was at the meeting could try to listen to it. Because, you know, since I was there, you know what I mean? Maybe I'll understand it better. Um, so I can at least try to do that.
All right. And I have to tell you, I'm not correcting many other things I said that, uh, you know, as it gets written, some of it doesn't sound that sensible and the grammar's not great, but I, I kind of feel like leaving it, you know. They.
Yeah.
That they, they aren't too embarrassing. Yeah. Okay. That's my only one. Craig and Nicholas, anything?
Uh, only if I miss Judith.
I know. Okay, Nicholas, we're counting on you. You have to read them and come up with all the corrections.
You're the lawyer. Come on.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good as well. I mean,
Okay.
Uh, I second your comments on verbatim. They, they're kind of long-winded with a lot of extra fluff in there. It doesn't make them very useful, but.
Yeah, they suck.
They suck. I said it right at the beginning. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, for public comment.
Public, now, public comment. But on the minutes, please, if you don't mind. Yeah. Um, Rita has her hand up. I hope it's about the minutes.
Here's Rita.
Okay, great.
It is about the minutes. I, I just, I just want to say that even though the, the minutes seem extremely wordy compared to, um, the minutes that have been skeleton minutes, as I call them, um, recently. You know, it really paints a, a proper picture for the people that not only couldn't get in tonight into the call, but for, um, archives for the future, because in eight years, we'll be back in the same spot trying to figure out how did this particular situation happen? And so having these minutes as an archive, something for the new planning commission and the new council to be looking at will be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, good.
I motion to. I motion to approve the minutes from November sixteenth.
I second. Can, we can just do all in favor?
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Okay.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Tark?
Aye.
Vice Chair Goulden?
Aye.
Chair Kopsl.
Aye.
And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can that be my last official act?
Oh, Craig.
What are we going to do without you?
I don't know, I think you guys are going to survive just fine. So, motion to adjourn.
Got to say goodbye to Craig and Judith, wow. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll give Craig a second.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone, eleven twenty-two, that's pretty good.
Good night.
Okay, good night.
Well done, thank you.